Shall we pray?
Pradhana jis kundam. That you see, Devanu sanidlo, mo khalmi undandi.
Those who can.
Mo khalmi undaga galina varu, mo khalmi grandi.
Our loving heavenly Father.
Ma primi galina, parlo kumun thandri.
Our gracious and wonderful God.
Ma krupa galina, adhutakarmi chay deva.
God of all grace, mercy and peace.
Sarva krupa kani karambala ko deva.
Thank him for the incredible heavens with which thou brought us nigh unto thee so that we could have communion and fellowship with the true and the living God.
Nija monu, satyavain thodaina Devanu yuddaku, prabha me vachhi saavaasam kalimunde dhanikoraku, gora pillarakthamu dhvara, prabha meereyamamalai sami pasulaka chesnandi kaini konnamalu.
We thank him for all the spiritual blessings with which thou blessed in heavenly places in Christ's name.
Kristi esunandhu, paralokshramlo, paralokshamlo, pratyaatme aashiradha ma krutha dachbitnandi kaini konnam chalisna.
Thank him for the wonderful blessed glorious hope lively hope given at all that one day we are going to be with thee his right presence in heaven for ever and ever.
Okadina mo, prabha maris, sadakalam, yugayugamalu, neetokuda, paralokamandu, pravenesu kristu dhvara, evidamga, nena utthutthuna kadupthama na, shubpradamena, adhutamena, mahimagala, parapramari, jivamgalanirikshana, meeru ma kichinandi kaini konnam chalisna.
The greatest hope and expectation that we have is Christ.
Kristi esunandhu ma kunna goppanirikshana, ento, adhutamena nirikshanaadi.
We thank him for all the prayers of the saints all over the world for us.
Ma koraku prapanchavatanga, edarete pradhana jishtunaru, varandanibedini konnam chalisna.
Answer all our prayers beyond our asking and wanting.
Ma, ohaku, minchana dharamlo, me madigindanikante, kuga, adikhamuka, prabha ma pradhana jaba dey chen.
I pray for all those who are connected through Zoom or YouTube, air prayers around the world, Lord watch over them, help them to create respect and reverence, they will be seated in their projects through thy word.
Adheidamga, prabha marii, kudikallo, edhenga, ma thopati varate, kaliskuntunaro, elanega, prabha marii, YouTube dhara, Zoom dhara, ala da, prabha marii, gada kuchundu, pratyaekshanga, prapanchavatanga, edarete edanga, kuchundu, randharuni, sanidlo, bhai bhaktulato, gauramadhalato, kuchundu, saimchavani, pradhana.
Let thy voice be heard, thy presence be experienced by you, Yuvanath.
Ma lo, pratyaokkaru prabha, ni sanidini, aanandichatika chen, pratyaokkaru ni stharaminatika chen.
Pray for all those worship and honoring it or make such a meal then rest for example not more.
Ma madhilo unavar, anarogengunatlethe, prabha varini meere, tak, thakki mutti sastabachivani, samukkuchandi, melikake naapkun jasko.
We pray for our prayers in Delhi and other places watch over them, ma.
Delhi lo, nama apriyalan guda, that is, naapkun jiskun prabha ni, me kapdhalunchen.
Pray for Hyderabad, Hyderabad and Jhawarshamam, ma gavna situation give them victory in thy mighty name.
Hyderabad, Hyderabad, nu, marichennale lo, na joshama, marakrana, paristhal, marigundru, kavati me naamandu, prameere varini naapkun jiskun pradhastana.
My children.
Ma muli kaapadandi.
We find the power of God in thy mighty name.
Barbani, balamena, naamandu, adhukar, chikasik, danditi bandhistuna.
And we bring out the altar while sprinkling blood and pray with thanksgiving in the precious and free name of our Lord and our Savior Jesus Christ.
Ma mulandani, nee nithani, badana, paristhal, rakta, proksani, techkuntu, ma prabhu nu, rakshagadaku, yesu kristi okka, amulyamena, madhuramena, namanna, stutinchii, pradhinsu vedkuntu nam, thandri, amen.
There is a two-fold bottom of the church.
Sanghani ki, rendantala bharam unnadi.
Sabegay, address to bhara ide.
Firstly.
Madhika.
Madhali daaki.
It is our bound and responsibility to remind God people that the Lord Jesus Christ is coming again.
Prabha ni, yesu kristu, thirigivastunnadu, anna visyaani, sanghani ki, maris sangamalunavari ki, teliputa, ma kentoo, bharamenadi, pramukhamenadi.
Kartanad, yesu kristaru, matthi thirigibartha aidhar, embadagi, sabegi tilseedu dake, namagesto, bhara vallavari agideve.
Not that they do not know it.
Anta valakke, thilidani, gada visyaam.
Ee visya, gottila antala.
They know it.
Valakke, thilso.
Avri, gotide.
They express it in their prayer, their worship and preaching and all that.
Marivar pradhana lo, vari aaradhana lo, marivar jesa bodhalanit lo, dini, varvakthaparastanam untar.
Arapraarthani galile, araradhani galile, orumadvantha, bodhani galile, oru vaktapadista irtar.
All the believers all over the world they know it.
Prapanchavatanga, visvasalandari ki, ee visyaam thilso.
Prapanchadali, ravanthi, laa visvasigali ko, ee visya, gotide.
Lord Jesus Christ is going to come again.
Prabhanesu kristu, rana unnadu.
Kartanad, yesu kristanu, thirigibarlikidhar.
But we have to remind them again and again.
Aite, marla marla, variki, visyaam, naapkun jistun dal.
Adhre, thirigathiriga, matthi, avrige, ninupmaadi, kuda bekha agide.
Because when we see the, the way they behave, the way they conduct themselves.
Indikana, vaari pravartanu, vaari yala, tumnutha, kamparchkuntunaro, a vidhanu, gaanu, xari, gamanichchustae.
Ondisari, avravpravartane, enna, avri, yavriteli, nadukolthaidhar, embadagi, gamanichsin, odudu dadhre.
It appears that they are not conscious of the coming of the Lord.
Prabha ni, yesu kristu, raakada visyamlo, varu, gamanam lekunda, ekagratle, lekunda, unnarannadi, kanipistam untadi.
Avrakartanad, yesu kristanu, baronad, visyaadali, ekagratte, vallavari, illa, embadagi, kantaidha.
Ah, we have mentioned that konto samayam, me megalinadi.
Kontasamayam, me megalinadi, na partman, vintar, partkunagadandi.
Solpa samaya, baaki ide, embadagi, na, haadha, haadi, devalre.
Ah, that is very straightforward if there is one line there.
Akkada, maris.
Kontasamayam, me megalinadi, krishthi esu prabhu thirigivachun, leshamanu, jaguchedu, suutiga, okmaata manu, kachustana.
Ilisolpa samaya, matra, baaki ide, yesu kristar bartha aidhar, embadagi, neeravadanta, matna, na, odutaidha ve.
He said, behold, I come quickly.
Idigo, nenu, tharaga, vachchuchun, na, nu, vananadaina.
Athana, hildhar, ego, na, bega, bartha idhene.
Then the question is, are you ready for his coming?
Maripresnetante, mariana, raakada koraku, manasiddhangu, nama.
Presne, nembadagi, no duga, athana, baronakha, gi, na, siddhva, agidiwa.
Are you saying, Lord, wait for some more time?
Le, bate, prabha, inkontam, seevu, agu, inkontam, samayavagu, antanama.
Illa, kartane, inon, solpavattu, taalu, ino, iru, antaeltaidhiva.
By our wife, she declared, we are doing that.
Ma na, jeevanavidhana, ma na, jeevthundvara, ala kanipistundu, mari.
Namajeevita, vidhanada, muluku, vaaghi, aritiyak, kantaidha.
We know it that Lord will come in all suddenness.
Hataatuka, prabhu vastadu, ani, manam, teru, manakthilso.
Akasmika, vaaghi, athana, barthaane, kartanu, barthaane, embadagi, nam, gotide.
Then why we emphasize that the challenge is individual, it is not substituted by anybody.
Andike, rakshana, nadhi, vaktigatamana, visyaam, vere, visyaam, tadi, pratyaamnayamga, le, dani, me, no, kijaptuntam.
Rakshana, embodu, adu, vaktigatavadanta, visya, vere, visya, ke, sammanapattadala, embadagi, na, othi, othi, eltaidhve.
You should be born again.
Nevthiri, janminchali.
Neenu, manasantra, handubekku.
If your parents are not born again.
Ni talidandalu, thri, janminchakapote.
Ni netanad.
If your, if your parents are born again.
Ni talidandalu, janminchunte.
Ondu, veli, neenak, tanditai, galu, manasantra, handirbodu.
Ah, but does not mean that you have to go along with them.
Niuguda, valthopati, ellipotthava, na, ardhanga, adu.
Avro, tiki, neenu, kuda, hoti, embadagi, artha alla.
Simple example is.
Samanam, udhane, antente.
Samanavadanta, udhane, andre.
Now, by train or by train, you will individually have to have a ticket.
Chandi, train lo, gani, plane lo, gani, ekada, pranam jisna, pratyaokkaru, okka, ticketu, tamakoraku, kunkala.
Railan lagali, imanadlagali, yelli, pranamadur, kuda, vaktigatavadanta, undu, ticket, anna, kondukolbe.
Ah, just like your father, mother are going, you cannot just go along with them.
Ni talidandalu, kuda, pranam jistunna, kavati, varthopati, neenu, kuda, pranam jayachu, ananukolim.
Nimmatanditai, galu, pranamadthaidhar, adhridhinda, na, no, avrakuda, pranamadboodu, andukolbaru.
Once my wife and our sister were standing in the balcony.
Oh, sorry, namari, na, bharaya, inkosahodari, balkanile, nilburunnar.
Ondisari, na, hendati, matthi, inobasahodari, balkanile, nintidro.
Nine at about nine o'clock.
Raatri, bausa, tomidi, apranthalo.
Raatri kala, samaya, ombatagirbodu.
Clear sky will spread its torches.
Akashamantha, ento, theataga, marinakshatal, nakshatralto, vilipotthava, kanipistandi.
Akashavella, swachva, agi, nakshatrakal, belikthairu, danna, odutaidha.
Very good atmosphere.
Ento, chakkati, vathavarnam.
Estu, vallay, vathavarna.
My wife said to her sister.
Marina, bharaya, sahodar, antandi.
Na, hendati, sahodari, tiki, hildilo.
Akka, he declared that Lord is coming now.
Akka, prabhu, ipre, ostadha, emo, atta, kanipistunakka, ni.
Akka, kartanik, bartha aidhane, anistaidha, akka.
At that time, my son, Titus, very young, he was with them.
Marasahodari, lo, na, kumar, Titus, chala, chinnapilladu, valthopati, nakkada.
Ava, ga, na, na, maganu, Titus, chickahoodga, avro, tiki, irtaidhnu.
Her sister told Titus.
Ah, sahodari, Titus, antandi.
Ah, sahodari, Titus, noti, hildilo.
Hey, Titus, mommy is saying, Lord is coming, when Lord comes, mommy would be taken, what will he do?
Aray, Titus, mariprabhu vastadha, nam, amantandi, maru, ochnabu, mi, ammanu, and, diskalpatthu, ni, sangatanti.
Oh, Titus, kartanu, bartha aidhar, embadagi, nimthai, heltaidhar, re, ondu, veli, kartanu, nimthai, no, oidhre, ni, nagati, eno.
Then Titus checked.
Abu, Titus, annad, gada.
Aga, Titus, selida.
No problem, ma, my auntie.
Auntie, na, kiam, samasiledu.
Auntie, na, ne, kiam, samasaila.
I will hold on her shani and go with him.
Neenu, av, chiranbattu, kuda, atla, ellipotthana, annad.
Na, na, ak, siria, nedkoltene, mele, khoubirtene.
Oh, na, he said, ya.
Alaa, kado, alaa, kudradu.
Adu, nadiyodhila.
He hoped.
Alaa, asal, kado.
Adu, vattika, agode, illa.
You have been born again.
Nevthiri, janminchala.
Neenu, manasantra, handubekku.
You have regret of your sin.
Ni papa, neeshvi, niupaschattappadala.
Ninnapapa, galigadi, neenu, paschattappadbe.
You should not think that you are an immoral, evil people.
Rakshimpa, badi, na, vaari, gurugu, kinnanu, unnan, anukogadu.
Rakshana, handidhavara, ondu, chatriyali, neenidhiam, dha, tirko, baru.
Oh, I am embarrassed.
Neenu, bearshavalu, na, nu.
Na, na, bearshavad, idhene.
I also sing songs of joy.
Neenu, maris, siyonu, geetalo, paralapadthanu.
Na, nu, chion, haadgalani, haadtaidhane.
I have a Bible in my hand.
Na, chiyatlu, kuda, Bible, lo, undi, Bible, undi.
Na, na, kayali, Bible, ide.
I have fellowship with saints.
Maribhaktulato, na, ku, saavaasam, undi.
Bhattrati, kinnan, kesahavaasam, ide.
But the question is, are you born again?
Adhe, presnetante, nevthiri, janminchina, va.
Presnetandre, neenu, manasantra, handidhia.
What day and time when you have confessed your sins?
Ek, dinamuna, ekshamala, ee samamlo, ni, papa, no, oppukunavu.
Yaav, samayali, yaav, dinadali, yaav, chanalali, neenu, papa, galan, arkeyamadidi.
If you are a saved person.
Ni, rakshimpa, badi, vakti, vate.
Neen rakshana, handidhavakti, agidhre.
There would be a day and time when you have confessed your sins with penitential guilt before the Lord.
Prabhu, edutap, paschattattat, hoodemuto, ni, papa, lo, oppukunavu, ok, dinamani, ok, ghadiya, ok, samayamani, untadi.
Kartanay, edirinali, neenapapa, galan, gadi, paschattappattanta, ondu, dinav, ondu, samaya, ondu, chana, nodi, irtada.
As you have a date and time when you are born in this world.
Chuni, lokamlo, mir, puttinat, edhi, puttinasamayamu, ivra, aspetkuntanga.
Ee lokadil, neen, hutidanta, samaya, dinanka, samayana, barditkolte, valla.
So how do you have a date and time when you are born again?
Adhe, vidhanga, ni, thirigijanminchida, kuda, ee dinamuu, ee samayamu, ee ghadiya, nadhi, no, gutu, vettkala.
Neenu, adhiri, tele, neenu, manasantra, handidanta, dinav, samaya, chana, vanna, barditkolbe.
If he is not there.
Ok, lala, lenatlethe.
Ondu, veli, haag, illa, andre.
When we have taken it granted because we are among the fellowship of saints, you are saved.
Bhaktula, saavaasamlo, la, parishuddha, saavaasamlo, neenu, unnanu, le, ala, ok, cholakana, bhavamuto, a, sarle, sarpetkuntan, ankuntanavemo.
Bhattrasa, havaasatali, parishuddha, sahavastali, na, ni, dani, bidhanteli, sulubavadi, neen, tagalthairbodu.
That do not work out.
Gamanichchane, ala, pani, chayadu.
Adu, kelsa, madodhila.
You have to be born again.
Nevthiri, janminchalsande.
Neenu, kandithavadi, manasantra, handubekku.
Maybe God has organized this meeting for you.
Bausa, ee, kudikalu, ee, kootamalu, nekoruke, erparjeshade, ma, devu.
Bausa, ee, kootagalana, ni, na, agi, devu, erpar, madirbodu.
And the time passed by the fellowship of saints, there is a tendency to think like that.
Chuni, parishuddha, saavaasamlo, manam, edatek, untundaga, okosari, alanti, bhavana, untam.
Ondisari, kelu, sari, parishuddha, sahavastali, na, edabidhaidhva, ga, anta, bhavani, galalirtave.
When I was Hebrewan twenty years ago.
Chala, saavachal, kithane, Hebrewan, unappudu.
Anika, varshagala, hindena, na, Hebrewan, lirvaga.
The Lord let me take care of some things, he came and met me.
Konisangalu, parivekshinchichuskune, ok, devanu, sevukudu, na, nan, galisna.
Kelu, sabegalana, nodikoltar, anta, ba, devu, sevukru, na, nan, beti, adhru.
So many years he had been serving the Lord.
Chala, saavachal, varu, ku, a, na, prabhu, sevala, unnad.
Anika, varshagala, varige, avro, kartanase, velidhru.
He said, Uncle, I want to share something very interesting.
I, annadu, marie, uncle, neenu, kala, asaktikaramenadi, mito, punchkala, punchkala, ankuntanad.
Avre, hildiro, uncle, avre, na, na, kelu, asaktikaravada, visyalalana, neemotik, hunchkolbe, kendi, dene.
What he said really shocked me.
A, n, chepna, visyaam, nija, na, na, chala, asthirparchindi.
Avre, hildantam, matukalu, na, na, aachirapadsidhau.
After I came to serve the Lord, after serving for seven years, then I was born again, he said.
Neenu, prabhu, seva, kochina, yedu, saavachal, tarvata, neen, thirijanminchan, uncle, annad.
Na, nu, kartanase, sevege, banda, yedu, varshagala, nantra, manasantra, handidhene, uncle, lanthelidhru.
Adhavainat, le.
Adhavainat, le, gada.
Ni, me, gartagil, alla.
He had surrendered his life to serve the Lord.
Ante, prabhu, nu, sevinchutak, thana, jeevthamunu, samarpichkunad.
Andre, kartanana, sevislikke, thana, jeevithvana, samarpiskunnu.
We had training in Hebrewan also.
Hebrewan, lo, thanaku, tarpeedu, kuda, undi.
Hebrewan, lily, athanike, tarbeeti, agide.
He had been portrayed to some church.
Marivaka, sangamalo, thanu, sevukdaga, kuda, niyam, niyam, kajabadad.
Ondu, sabel, athanase, sevakna, ki, neemisalpatti, dana.
After seven years of service, he said, it is only then I was born again.
Ah, sevalo, yedu, saavachal, puurti, eskunat, tarvate, thirijanminchanu, anantana.
Ah, seveli, yedu, varshagala, sevamadidhana, antara, na, na, manasantra, handidhene, embadagi, eltaidhane.
Adhavainad.
Adhavainandhi.
Artha, idhre.
Did we make ourselves clear to you?
Marie, ma mulime, me, kaka, spastanga, chepa, ma, visyaam.
Namannav, spastavadi, rithi, helidhiva, na, u.
Then I told him.
Abu, ne, annan, gada, anto.
Athana, kina, na, hildha.
During this time, he would have baptized many people, what would happen to them?
Mariyedu, saavachal, alone, vento, manik, bhati, samichav, gada, ya, marivari, kiam, avtadi.
Apa, neen, yedu, varshagala, varige, isto, jendike, dikshaasana, kote, la, av, sangateno.
Some of them, they munchinavu, gada, ah, they are taking it.
Yantom, manidhi, munchinavu, gada, mar, ala, sangatanti.
Isto, jendana, muluksidhia, la, av, sangateno.
Oh, ne, 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 munchinavu, vali, ama.
Ah, nija, na, munchinavu, uncle.
Neen, javagavu, na, na, avrana, muluksidhene, uncle, andro.
See, a servant of God made confession like that.
Ok, devanu, sevukdandi, ala, oppukunadchandani.
Notre, bade, varisevukravadi, he, opkondi, dadha.
But there is a tendency to think like that.
Adu, ma, na, matulamo, ala, anukune, bhavana, oh, halo, untam, manam.
Na, ma, na, matradhavu, kelu, bhavani, oh, he, galalirtave.
If there is anybody thinking like that, make a decision today.
Ok, vela, ikkada, kuchunavu, lavena, ala, anukuntunad, eti, rogu, ok, tirman, jiskundi.
Ilikutantavu, lavi, a, rithi, a, aadharan, koltaidhre, tirman, madkoli.
Gave it a signal.
Voice, sadly, both news, research, understand.
Another instance I want to tell you.
Inkokasandaravam, ikchappal, ankutnan.
Inondu, sandaravana, na, ni, me, hildbe, kandidhene.
Ok, devanu, sevukudu.
Ok, devu, sevukru.
Very strict man.
Chala, kramashikshana, undavu, nister, undavu.
Baala, kramashikshana, dalirtaidh, danti, vakti.
Even now, he is very, very strict, he is an engineer, he resigned, he job, came to serve the Lord.
Ipudu, guda, na, chala, kramashikshana, untadu, engineer, ja, ujjagam, resign, chesi, ujj, rajinama, chich, prabhu, sevala, unnad.
Av, engineer, agi, resign, maadi, avr, baala, kramashikshana, vaaghi, sevamartaidhar.
Wherever he is put at.
A, na, ikkada, pampichna.
Avrani, ellik, kalisi, dhru, sevege.
He asked the elders of church to give judgment every week, one person.
Mari, varamulo, okasari, ivaran, ok, sakshmi, vala, ni, akar, sanna, sangapadhal, chep.
A, a.
Sangapadhal, saksh, ok. Sangapadhal, lo, okar, pratyaokkaru, marivaram, ok, xar, saksham, chappali, chaptad.
Pratyaobai, sabey, hiryero, pratyaavara, obro, sabey, sakshelbe, kanteltaidhru.
And then every week, one servant, one elder will stand and give their judgment.
Ala, pratyaavaram, ok, sangapadha, mar, akandil, badi, saksham, chep, tundavu.
Irithi, agi, pratyaavara, oba, sabey, hiryer, edhini, tu, sakshelaidhru.
All the seven people, they have to fight.
Yedu, mandi, saksham, chesna.
Yedu, jana, sakshik, mugithu.
But this servant of God helped, one of them did not talk about baptism.
Aite, sevukudu, gamanichidhante, a, yedu, gurlo, okar, bhaatthisam, gurinchii, prastavana, chelidh, vala, sakshamlo.
A, yedu, rali, obro, dikshaasana, visyalali, av, sakshelila.
Repeating him.
A, yedu, gurlo, okar, tava, bhaatthisam, gurinchii, sakshamlo, prastavinchala, dana, sangatii, sevukudu, kutichna.
A, yedu, rali, obro, dikshaasana, visyalali, saksheli, mathadli, illa, embadagi, a, sevakru, gurtisidhru.
The third day morning, Sunday morning, he visited his house.
Marivadvar, mudhavelli, a, ne, a, indikal, darshichad.
Banu, vara, belig, or, manik, hogi, a, sandarshisidhru.
And then he asked him.
A, na, dige.
Av, keldidhro.
Ah, ah, why you are giving judgment, he did not talk about baptism.
Ana, miru, saksham, chedabdu, mi, bhaatthisam, gurichu, miru, mathal, le, dana.
Anavreni, sakshelvaga, ni, dikshaasana, daba, gema, mathadli, illa, yakke.
And in Telugu, ilan, annadu, alay, chappan.
Telugu, ilagana, dada, alay, chapparan.
Teluginale, irithi, lavi, avri, hildidhru, adhene, hildene.
Chisukundega, chappadi.
Tagandre, tani, hildodo.
Chappu, easily.
Chisukundega, chappadi.
Tagandre, tani, hildodo.
Aray, ne, chisukundega, ya, and, kene, chappu.
Neen, chisukaladu, ya, andike, chappal, ne.
Na, tagandila, pa, na, hildila.
Abad, ma, chappadi.
Abad, ma, chappadi.
Sull, engelli.
Adhavani, gada, ne.
Ni, me, gartaidhla.
Taken baptism.
A, annadu, neen, bhaatthisam, chisukaladu.
Athana, hildidhru, na, dikshaasana, tagandila.
Oh, the man who had been the elder right from the beginning of the church.
A, sangam, aaramba, maina, pandundhi, mar, a, vakti, mar, a, sanghani, ki, sangapadha, gunthunad.
Sabey, praramba, gundethu, madhulagundu, adhey, vakti, a, sabegi, hiryana, agidhane.
All the years he had been acting as an elder of the church.
Ante, a, sangamalo, peddaga, inni, saavachal, konasagut, oched.
Sabey, hiryana, agi, estu, varshagalu, konisagut, abandhidhane.
And he is not baptized.
Ibrana, bhaatthisam, ponnala.
Inno, athana, dikshaasana, tagandila.
Then that's Sunday.
A, advaramu, a, banu, vara.
After the meeting was over.
Kudikai, pentarvata.
Sabey, mukudum, male.
He gathered.
A, na, mar, akkada, samkushnadu.
He gathered all the elders.
Marivakdali, samkushnadu.
Hiryana, kudisidhnu.
In the front of all of them, he asked that brother again, that question, I, have you been baptized?
Mar, a, andarkisne, thudga, bati, a, sahodar, kuda, dige, so, ana, mariv, bhaatthisam, ponnada, rani.
Adhridhinda, av, elrgusne, gutthiro, dridhinda, av, sahodar, dekshaasana, tagandidhira, ant, keldidhru.
Then this man said.
Apri, vaktanadu.
Aga, iv, vakti, hildidhru.
Hey, you came in the morning, you asked me, I said, I have not taken, why are you asking again?
Otunne, inti, koch, dige, kada, ne, chepan, gada, chisukaladu, malli, andukadukutunavu, dige.
Belig, manakban, dakedhurala, pa, hildidhunala, matthi, a, keldaidhre.
He wanted to prove it in the midst of the other elders.
Anta, migita, sag, peddala, edutu, da, ni, nirdarana, chal, dige.
Ulidanta, sabey, hiryera, mundeha, danna, nirdarshbe, kanteli, keldidhru.
Then immediately he told him.
Vettan, a, annad, gada.
Kudli, av, hildidhro.
From your, from today, your eldership is gone. Your eldership is gone, you are no more elder of the church.
Eerojun, nunchi, mar, sangamalo, ne, peddaga, unnadha, manadi, inkal, le, du, annad.
Iwathni, nindha, neen, sabey, hiryana, agirlik, agi, illa, anthelidhru.
The place where he was serving is a very dangerous place.
Ni, seva, jesa, sthalamo, chala.
Who jesa, gal.
Neen, jutran, a, na, jesa, sthalam.
A, a, sahodar, a, na, sevukdaja, sthalamo, chala, bankraman, sthalamadi. A, seve, martaranta, sevakru, seve, martaranta, sthaladu, bainkavadanta, sthaladu.
There is called rakshisa, gadda.
A, rakshisa, gadda, antar, dani.
Adhanna, rakshesi, gudda, anthelidhara.
Patta, pagal, narukutar, al, mansal.
Patta, pagal, e, mar, mansal, narukutar, anta. A, du, hagale, kattarsipidthara, jandrana.
But this man of God has got the guts to tell him that.
Kan, ee, devajan, niki, enni, gundal, unnalani, a, maata, anta, chappan, niki.
Notre, devu, sevakri, guest, dhairya, ma, thelikke.
He declared in the midst of the elders, he is no more elder in the church, he can come to the church as an ordinary believer and go.
Migita, sangapadhal, edutu, ee, sangapadha, to, nerugajapeshadu, eerojun, nunchu, sambha, sangapadha, unnad, niki, ashram, le, du, mar, migita, visvasalaga, ne, mir, vach, vellachan, japeshad.
Ulidha, hiryera, madhutalli, av, hildidhru, iwathni, nindha, neen, sabey, hiryana, agirlik, illa, samanavada, visvasan, dha, bandho, okbe, kastan, helidhru.
They were all stunned.
Valanda, aachirapenar.
Av, randra, aachirapattro.
This man was there right from the beginning.
Aray, e, na, adinundi, aaramba, ununad, isangamalo.
Eta, aaramba, sabey, aaramba, dinda, itantavakti.
And then after, after everybody has gone.
Varandra, ellipantarvata.
Elru, horthod, male.
This man met him.
Iwakti, mar, gash, serving.
A, sevukdani, galisna. Iiwakti, matthi, sevukdanna, beti, adha.
Anana, I will go somewhere else, take back the income.
Anana, neenu vera dekere keli, bathan dhuskunostanana annadu.
Anana, orainanu vera ekka dehage dixashastana tavundu barthinanti thiridru. He said, no, ikkare dhuskawali.
Neednae nae, ikkare dhuskawalanannadu.
Oraine illa, illa tagalbeekan thiridru. That was the state of affairs.
Alaa gunindi adinallo, anta akkaruna sangati.
Asangati aaritthi ellithu.
Ipurugoda neevanana.
Ipurugoda ala avikta lagavunna.
Yuvathikku daavikta hageedhan.
He is not more, no more elder of the church.
Asangamalinkana Sangapetta gaunasaagatlet.
Asabeyli, avusabey hiriara. So what I am saying is, do not take things for granted.
Orne neensiptrantae, sangatulannu visyalannu, chulakannaka dhuskothu.
Notary, naa neenidathaidanandra, visheygalanna sulbo agi tagalbedre. Lord Jesus Christ is going to coming again.
Pravan Esu Krishu tharigavastunnadu, kartanadu Esu Krishanu beeganu barlikki danai.
So you have to remind the congregation again and again.
Kabatti samajani ki marala manna visham naapkom jestu unnaali.
Sabegae idanna tirigathiriga nenupmaadikuttarabekku. Second thing is.
Rendavi vishamintante.
Erani sangati enandra. That you should tell the world that the Lord is coming again.
Lokamunaka kuudachappali, pravan Esu Krishu thirigavastunnadu.
Kartanadu Esu Krishanu thirigibarthaayidaramdaagi, lokake saarihelabekku. Yeah, that is a very important thing.
Achaala pramukkani shum.
Idu baala pramukki vanthu. When you go for opener.
When manam, byrangaswathu velapudu.
Now, swarthigodha. After giving the gospel.
Manam swarthichinadu tarvata.
Now swarthakottum. Normally you end with that word in Acts chapter sixteen, verse thirty-one.
Sahajaanga mari apostle karam paharu muppaivutavasna jepthundam.
Sahaja agi apostle krithigal adinaru mowattundu thirtaithaiv. Believe on the Lord Jesus Christ, thou shalt be saved and thine household.
Pravan Esu Rann Viswasa munchunu, appu neevunu, neentivaanu raksana pundudruvantam.
Kartanadu Esu Vinali nambikkeedhaaga, neenu neena manevu raksane ondiviriyemdaagiltheve. That is good.
Adu machite, adu vallede.
But beyond that, you have to tell the world that the Lord Jesus Christ is going to come again.
Daanikantayekkuga, pravan Esu Krishu varu thirigavastunnadu vannavishyani kuudachappali.
Adukintale echaga, kartanadu Esu Krishanu thirigibarthaayidaramdaagi, helabekku. That is the greatest hope that we have in Christ.
Ma Krishunandu manaku na goppanirikshanaade.
Nakka thanali namagiruvanta dotanirikshanaado. What have God says?
Eunavakamethundee.
Then he would come again.
Aana thirigovachnappudu.
Atana thirigibarvaaga. When we see him as he is.
Aana unnattuka manavani chuchinappudu.
Ataniruvante naa atanunoduvaaga. We shall be like him.
Manam aana nu poli undamu, atana noholi naavirtave.
We shall be like him.
Aana nu poli undamunchanadu, atanantainaavirtave.
That would mean.
Then ante, that arthamitante.
That arthainandra. We imagine the likelihood that we lost in Adam, we are going to regain again.
Adhamunandu manamu kolpoina, aa swarupamu, aa polika, marala manam thirigisambadinchukuntamani. Adhamunalli kalponnanta, aa swarupa, holykina thiriginau sambadich.
It is mind-boggling to think how this uttering, unworthy insignificant person could be like the very God of heaven.
Kabattchundidi, marie ento balahinudugu, marie dhotbakiagu, ee buh gatamalena mana lo, inta paraloka sammanamena, ee deva sammanarupamu yala ayertathanuka asthirunkalakochmanik.
Priyare notary, eena balahinru, buh sammadavadanta, ee shakti hinradanta namadalli, paraloka damahimay swarupa yavritthi ellithumbustaidaane. For John chapter three.
Madhat Yohanumurajam.
Madhale Yohanamurne. Verse two.
Rendavachnum.
Eraniachnum. Believers now are we the sons of God and it does not yet appear what we shall be. We know that when he shall appear, we shall be like him for we shall see him as he is.
Srilara, ipur manamu devuni pillalamayunnamu, manamika eemaavudhumu, adi inkaprataksha parachabadaledu. Gani, aana pratakshamennappudu, aana unnattuka ne, aana nu chutumukanuka, aana nu poli undamani erugudhumu.
Priyare, egad eva maklaagidave, mundenau yenagu vivaadu, innupratakshavaglila, krishanupratakshanaadre, nau atana haagiruvavendu ballevo. We shall be like him, think about it.
Aana nu poli undamuu, anna maadakuruncho kasaraalachinajendi.
Atana haagiruvavu, ambamathana, unsaraalachinamadre. That is the greatest hope, glorious hope, blessed hope, lively hope that we have in Christ.
Krishthi esunandu manaku na nirikshana, anta gopadi, anta mahimagaladi, anta adputamennadi, anta jyamagaladi.
Kartanali, krishthi esuniruvanta, namagiruvanta niriksha, adputavadu, mahimailadu, nirikshadu, deshtadu, dotadu. Colossians one twenty-seven.
Colossi lakku, obmodra jamir edachnum.
Colossi darigavandhi paththi. The last line says, Christ in you is the hope of glory.
Meela unna krishthu, mahima, nirikshanae unnadu.
Nimmaliruvanta krishthano mahimaya nirikshanaagidana emdaga. If, if Christ is in you, he is the hope of glory.
Krishthu niyandu unadala, aanae ni mahima nirikshanaayunnadu.
Yes, Krishanu ninnaliruvadaadre, atanae ninige mahimay niriksha. What a wonderful glorious hope Lord has given unto us.
Adputamaina, mahimayittamaina nirikshana magichadandi devu.
Yes, to all may mahimailanta, adputavadanta, nirikshana namakottidanai. That is the plan of God.
Adi devuni pranalika.
Idu devare vandu. That is the purpose of God.
Adi devuni udeshamu.
Idu devare udesh. That is the promise of God.
Adi devaleka vaadhanamu.
Idu devare vaadhana. Now it is a conditional promise.
Aythi, sharuthu thookudina vaadhanamandi.
In order, in order, in order that we may be like him.
Manam aana nu poli undutakoraku, nau atanae noholy ruddukkaagi.
We have to maintain holiness in our life.
Marajivutallo, parishuddhatanu konasagistu unnaali.
Namajivitali, pavitrathena sagis, konisagistarebe. For John chapter three, verse three.
Chandi murti yohanu moodu moodu, madhale yohanamooru moodu.
Very important verse.
Chala pramukkavana vachnum.
And every man that has this hope in him, purifies himself even as he is pure.
Aanae undu ee nirikshana, pettukkunna pratyvadu nu, aanae pavitra unnattuka, tannu pavitrani ga chesukunnu.
Atana mele ee nirikshanittirupa pratyopanu, krishthana shuddhanaagiruvante, tannanu shuddhamadikulutane. That is how we have to work out our salvation with fear and trembling so that we may always be holy and righteous, unblameable in the sight of God.
Atlu, marie, tamasvanta raksanu, bhamutto, vannukuttu, konasagistu unnaaga, manamu bhakti lo nu, marie lada parishuddhalo nu, neethi lo nu, anindhamuka unutaku, manala manam kapadukundu konisagathap.
Adrinthanau, namaparishuddhathena konisagistarebe kadre, nau bhakti ellie, neethi ellie, nau anyonithellie, konisagthiirtaiv. Are we holy?
Manam pavitra muka unnamaha.
Nau shuddharagidiva. When we confessed our sins.
Marapapa manu opukunappudu.
Namapapa galana opukundaga. He cleansed us by his blood, by faith, and he has sanctified us.
Viswasa mudvara, chandi aana mana, paapamalana, rakthamalana, kadigimalana, parishuddha parichnadu.
Nambike mulikavagi, atana rakthadeline, namapapa galanella, thodudu shuddhimadana. That is how, according to first Corinthians chapter one, verse thirty, he had become our sanctification.
Atlu, aana murti koranti, vakati muppaiprakaramu, mana parishuddhata aanau anundhi.
Adrinthanau, madhale korinta, vandu mowatra prakaravagi, atanae namapavitrathena, atanae shuddhikaranana, agidana, emdaga. He had become our sanctification.
Aana manaparishuddhathainadu.
Atanae namige shuddhikaranavagidana. And now we have to grow in that sanctification.
Ipudu, aa parishuddhatallo, manam yadagali, abhirudhipandali.
Nau aa parishuddhatellige nau veladu, abhirudhiyakbeekku. That is the Christian life.
Adi Christa jivutamante.
Idi Christa jivitandra. That is why we have the theme in first Thessalonians in chapter two, verse twelve, walk worthy of God.
Andike, murti Thessalonians keli rendu, panindu le manaku na, okansavachnumu devu nikki, taginattuka nadichkunadi.
Nau erenadusunani kederali nau nodutave, kartanige takkanthe, nadidukkodiri. We have been telling that Christian life is a life of progress.
Christa va jivutamanadi, abhirudhitokudinaadani jebthavannam.
Krishthiya jivita, abhiridhiyandige kudiida jivita. We have to make advancement day by day.
Ante dinaddinamo, mana munduku sagutu undutha chudali.
Nau dinaddinaku mundesagthiirtaivana nodubekku. As we hear the word of God.
Devu vakkam eventundaga.
Deva vake keltarbeekku. As God speaks to us.
Devu vandu maattatundaga.
Devu namatikumaattatara. Then they are confessing in your heart.
Akkada, apude, manu devu lo opukavali, nau aagle, aalle, namradigalopukolbeekku.
Oh Lord, forgive me.
Oh Prabha, aana nukshamichandi.
Oh kartanana. As much as I want to be holy, I am not able to maintain that holiness.
Entaga, neenu pavitrathalu, parishuddhalu unnaal, anukuntunnanu, kaani neenandalu konisagalevathutunnanu.
Yes, to naanu pavitra vagebeekkumda, thirukkodidana, adaradali. Oh Lord, I am in thy presence.
Oh Prabha, neenisandla unnadu.
Oh kartanana, neenisandhalidu. Clench me and wash me by thy blood.
Neerakthamalana nu kadigishuddicheemu.
Neenarakthadeline, nanthodudu shuddhimadu. As long as we are on the church.
Manam ee bhoomidunanta kaalam.
Nau bhoomeliruvastavare. We should come back to the cross again and again and again.
Marala, thirigithirigi, aa silivadukum raavalsinde.
Matte, matte, nau aa silivekkadu barabekagide. You have to come under the sprinkling blood of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Pravan Esu Krishuka raksana, rakthaprokshana kinnikiraavalsinde.
Kartanadu Esu Krishana rakthaprokshane ekkilekka barabekagide. There is an English hymn.
Oka English partundi.
Vandu English artidu. The chorus is very much in, I like it.
Ah pallavi, nakchalaistam.
Ah pallavi, nanikbarlistam. Let's try forget, get some money.
Get some money, marichupotanemo.
Get some money, marichupotanemo.
Get some money, nananamartvutteneno.
Let's try forget thine agony.
Niyaavedanenamartvutanemo.
Ninnaveedanenanamartvutteneno. Let's try forget thy love for me.
Naakoraku, neekunna premanenamartvutanemo.
Nanagagi, niniguvanta, preethena martvutteneno. Lead me to Calvary.
Kalvariyadukunannanadupincho.
Kalvarikkadigana nadissu. Oh Lord, lead me to Calvary again and again.
Oh Prabha, marala, marala, nanu, aa kalvariyadukunadupincho.
Kartane, matte, matte, nanana kalvarikkadigana nadissu. So that I may be under the sprinkling of the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ always in my life still because I am in this corruptible body, living in this corruptible world.
Ee, shuddra, ee, ento asshuddhamaina, kalishittamaina, lokamalo, neenu unnaaga, ee shamaana sharamaana neenu unnaankabatti. Ni vachparanthamu, oh Prabha, neenu, alavuni kalvarisilivadukke, neerakthaprokshana kriendiki neenu, unnunattuka cheemu.
Marala, marala, nadupincho.
Prabha, marala, marala, nadupincho.
Ee lokka, ee asshuddavada lokkadalina neerjivistarebe indha, nanana tirigathiriga, neenarakthaprokshane ekkadige, kalvarikkadigana nadissu. Once, one brother visited brother Baxing.
Oh sorry, oh sahodarudu, sir Baxing gankalsharu.
Once sorry, upa sahodaruno, sahodarabaxingavanna bettiyadu. When that brother entered his room.
Marie, aa sahodarudu, Baxingarikadilaki, prayashinappudu.
Ah sahodaruno, Baxingavara koniavu. The Baxing held his nose.
Baxingathanu mukkumuskinadu.
Ah Baxingavaru tammogmuchkondru.
Kampukodundu.
Kampukodutavundu.
Durvasana odithaiv.
What socks sento dating unna trainpichin.
Kanta, aa socksu, ba durvasana kodutnai.
Yaakandra, aa socks baadu durvasana odithaiv. Brother Baxing told him.
Baxingarayantu annadu.
Baxingavara hedidru. Hey, remove your socks and come.
Hey, ni socks, baidukodlesi ramannadu.
Ni socks, bitchit, varag bitchit, barapandru. Ah, he told him, he is a God servant.
Aana devansevakudu.
Atana kuudadeva. Sometimes in the YouTube, brother Baxing and brother Lazar Sehn and Philip and another brother, ah, is there in a picture, often it comes, that is the man.
But sir Baxingadupadu, sir Lazar Sehnus, sir Philip.
Philipgarupadu, inkoka sahodaruguda, konni photo laganpistunadu, amiga, aa inkoka vikti, ee sahodarudu.
Sahodar Baxingavara.
Aninka.
Andu entrae.
Sir Baxingavara tege, Philipankala, oru thirigala, Lazar Sehnavara tege, inobu sahodar kantaraala, oru igai idare. Ah, then brother Baxing said, go out and take out your socks and come.
Baxinganna, ayantu annadu, marie, nu baidkela, socks theseeselopelgranadu.
Baxingavara hedidru, neenu varagoga, socks bitchit, barapandu. Then he went out.
Baidkelaedu.
Varagodru. After some time, he came in.
Konda samayantru, baidlopalgachadu.
Solpa samay, adanantra varagadabandu. Still brother Baxing held his nose.
Inka Baxingavara, lopalragana bukupattukunadu.
Matte, Baxingavara mugmuchkondru. Then he said, did I not tell you to remove your socks and come?
Ya, socks theseesero, lopalgramanjeppan, chepladu.
Ya, napas, socks bitchit, varagadu, barlikhedidinalla. Yes, uncle, I have removed.
Uncle, theseesan, uncle socks.
Uncleavara, nan thagididdini. And took out from his pocket and showed.
Ah, chethulunchi, thesee, chubastradu.
Ekannu, jebulunchi.
Ah, jebulunchi, jebulunchiladi, thesee chubastradu, socks.
And pant kisee indha thagattorustaidaane.
Theseesnadu, kani jebulavetkunadu.
Kaalanunchi, theseesnadu, garajebulavetkunadu, socks.
Kaalaninda thagadu, jebnalitukundidana.
Many times it appears, believer saying, old is gold, keep the old man always with you.
Chala saalu, old is gold anta anta, kabatti, pathavis, pathasangatulupadavaslu, alaga dashpitkutantam.
Anekisari nau, halayadana, bangara embaadagi, ala angaitkoltave.
Andu kani, the old man, apuravut, tungi tungi justundadu.
Maripraachina purushu, avidangava, tungi tungi justantadu.
Adukaga, halay purushu neenamartanandra, boogie.
But what word of God says?
Adi devu vake evantunde.
Adi deva vake enathade. Put off, put off the old man and put on the new man, even Jesus Christ.
Praachina purushu, viddichi, anaga thesevesi, nothana purushu, navina purushu, anaga krishthu, darinchukunadi.
Halay purushu neenathagidhaaki, varsa purushu neenaseriskolriyemdaagilthaide. So these thoughts should help us to understand that we should walk worthy of God when you maintain holiness.
Parishuddhatanu, miru konasaginchay vishamalo, devu nikki taginattuka nadichkuntappudu, ee talampalannitni kuudha, ee talampalannitni kuudha, manuk saayapadali.
Pavitrathena, vandhi nadibekembaadaga, yella visheygalanna alochinamaduvaaga, ee ritthiellina, ondkoltha, hokshathiirtaiv. Walk worthy of God.
Devu nikki taginattu nadichkunadi.
Deva rigi takkanthe nadukkodiri. First Thessalonians.
Murti Thessalonians keli.
Chapter two.
Rendavajam.
Eraniyadhyaya. Verse twelve.
Paakundu panindu thirigalakalsnay.
That he walked worthy of God.
Adukkadiyapandu.
Devu nikki taginattuka, miru nadichkunavalanani. Apostles, having maintained their lives, they exhausted, the believers said Thessalonica, that they should walk worthy of God.
Apostolulu, maritessukul, Thessalonicalonna Viswasa lakku, devu nikki taginattuka nadichkawali, ani variki cheppey cheppey, samponagangalipenattu jepesnaadu.
Ee apostle ro, Thessalonicaladilivanta sabegae, deva rigi takkanthe nadidukkodiriyemdaagi, heli, 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 oru sustagidara. While having maintained his own life, holyly, justly, unblameably, it is then he is telling them.
Paulu tanakuttanuga, marita na jivutamalo, parishuddhamgano, neethigano, anindhamgano, pravartinchichijinchhi, tarvata, variki bodistnaadu.
Paulu ro, tamajivittalli, pavitra vage, anindavage, shuddavage, oru jivisi, innomprige bodistada. That is a great example and challenge for all those who preach the word of God.
Devu vake bodinchay pratyokrikikuudha, idu gopa, pressna, marisavalikuudha.
Deva vake bodisva pratyoparikuudha, vandu dotapressne, savalikuudha. Ezra chapter seven.
Ezra gandam edavajam.
Ezra yelne, dhaya. Verse ten.
Padavachnum.
Atanayachnum. Ezra chapter seven, verse ten.
Ezra gandam edavajam, padavachnum.
Ezra yedu hatto. There is a guiding principle as to how you should minister the world.
Marid devu vake, vela bodinchalaaniki, oka marie neemamu, suchav, suchinchapadine, neemamgani pistan.
Deva vake, avritli bodisbeekkumdekke, vandu deva ra neemau, ilkaan sittaida. There is a divine order.
Anaga, deva sammanamana, kramamu, kada justanam.
Ille devi kavada krama nodutave. This order cannot be changed.
Ee devi karama, machpadadu.
Ee devi krama, badalagodilla. Ezra seven ten.
Ezra yedu padhi.
Ezra yedu hatto. For Ezra had prepared his heart to seek the law of the Lord and to do it and to teach in Israel statutes and judgments.
Ezra yehova dharmasastramunu parishodinchii, daanichoppuna nadichkunutakunu, Israeruvilaku daanikattadalanu, vidulannu, neerputakunu, drudanischemu chesukunnu.
Avana yehova dharmasastro, nabhasisi, anusarisiliku, Israelriyadara, vidinayagallanu, kalisaliku, drudamadikundidano. Ezra had prepared his heart.
Tanahrudayamu, marid sidhapaichkunadu.
Ezra no tanahrudayana sidhamadikundanu. To seek the word of God.
Devu vake, parishodinchay vishamalo.
Deva vake, parishodisvasidali. And learn to do it.
Adu tarvata, dani cheetaku.
Ameladana, maadurali. And then to teach.
Tarvata, kattadu, bodinchitaku.
Ameladana, padeshisudrali. Learning and doing the word of God.
Neetchukodamu, chayadamu, devu vake, vake.
Deva vake, kalthikododu. And then you teach.
Tarvata, dani bodichadam.
Ameladu padeshamadu. This is the divine order.
Idi deva kramam.
Idu devi kavada krama. There was a pastor.
Oka pastor karundavaru.
Abu pastor irthaidru. While he was going to church to preach.
Aana bodichaniki, marisangan beltrapudu.
Oru bodislikke sabegoguaga. He found a hand in his compound.
Tana, avanamulu, okkodiini, kodipettu.
Kodipettu, dorikili.
Kodipettu, dorikindi.
Alia, vandu, angaladalli, ekkodi sikthavu. He said, God sent his kodipettu to me.
Marie, devu de, kodipettu, nakorukampechnadu.
Ega devare, nanagagi, kodienakalshida, nan thirukunnu.
And pattkoni, gampakindavitnadu.
Pattkoni, aa kodipettu, gampakindavitnadu.
Ah kodien hedidu, butti kelaagittnu.
And told his wife.
Baharato jepedu.
Ente hedidu. How gracious is our Lord.
Marapravi, enta krupa galavadamma.
Notary, namadeva rest. He knows our need.
Ah, marakkaravasrata, erugunu.
Long, long time we did not have any chicken curry.
Chicken curry, chicken kuradini, chala rozleipaindi.
Chicken, tintu baadinaagidu. Now God has given this.
Devu, marie kodipettichedu.
Deva rigi kodien kotidana. Make chicken for the lunch.
Marie, naakoraku, madhiana koraku, maric chicken kurajayana.
Madhiana, utakka, kodispallemadu. Visiting the compound church, he went to the church.
Maric compoundlane, churchundu, churchkelaedu.
Compoundlane, churchirta, churchkodru. She also went to the church.
Amaguda, maric churchkeliinadi.
Ake kuudacharchkodru. That day he was preaching on consciousness.
Aroju, pairasha, durasha, gunchiyaptavannadu.
Adina, durashay vishiddali bodisidru.
Ah, yo paralasum, aasintavadu.
Paralasum, aasinchavadu, and bodistnaadu.
Veravara, vashtavan, aasishbaradu.
Do not covet.
Ah, durashapadapudi.
Durashap, golbedri.
Ballagudi japtavannadu.
Ballagudi, gudi, japtavannadu.
Mees, gudi, gudi, thirtaiv.
Then God spoke to his wife.
Apudu devu, tanah baharatmaattanadu.
Agad devu, avan entiyoitikumaattadu. She got up in the midst of the congregation and went home.
Marie, aa, vathamana, madhilane, leechi, aminti keliinadi.
Ah, sabey, sandeshida, madhathelli, mane godlaake. Then he thought, he had gone to prepare my chicken.
Ekka nelapatinanukunadu, naakoruke kodukurajini, keliinadi, manukunadu.
Ee tan nimto thirukkoltaida, nanagagi, koditairmalik. The meeting was over.
Marik kodikaiipandhi.
He went home.
Aana putinti kelaedu.
Avru mane godru. There is no smell of the chicken.
Chicken kurakodukura vasan raattledu.
Kolip, kolip, palle vasne barthailla.
Mamsham korunidu, vasan raadu, gani chicken korunidu, balak, oguma, vasnustadu.
Ah, mamsham korunidu, enta vasan raadu, chicken korunidu, gumagama vasnustadu.
Veremamshadu, palle vasne astbaradilla, chicken baala vasne baradu.
I know it because I am a cook.
Neenu kuudamantajestan, gadi, nakdelsu.
Yaakandra, nanadiyamadu, nanadu. So there is no smell of chicken.
Kabatti kodukura vasan raattledu.
Kolip, palle vasne bartha. Then he asked, hey, did you not make chicken? बारे तड़नर यमा कुड़ी कुरा जेले दे इंदी याना अड़िगन एंटीन केले दुन याना मा पल्ले माटलीला नतेल
आया नु बोधित जितिम कदा नु बोधित छोकदा या
आया नीने बोधने माटलीला
वर्ल्ड ल सोम आशीन चवद्दू
वेरे रोस्तन आशीश बार
डॉन स्पोक तू मी
देवड़ मटल इन्ने ड़ावा माटो आमात निंदा देव
देन आई लेट डी हैंड गो
या कुड़ी पट्टा वादले इस्तान आकोली नन्हा बिट्टी बिट्टे
अरे इंडी साल चप्पा ले नीको
अरे इंडी साल चप्पा ले नीको यस्ते सारी येदा देखा मणि
शेटपे दे मनकु कादु
शेटलकी
मनकु कादु वाल्लकी
येदा दु नन्हा गल नमगल्ला अवरगे
अर्थ आइन दा
अद्वाइन देने
अर्थ आइन दा मेनी टाइम्स आवर बिहेवरी इस लाइक दिस
साला साल लु मना प्रवर्तन इलाकुंटदे
वो हैव तू मेंट
नेरितिलेर्तदे
वो हैव तू मेंटेन डी वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड
देवनी वाक्य नी कोनसागिस्तो उन्नाली मन देवर वाक्य नन्हा कोनसागिस्ता रबेक
वो हैव तू डू डी वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड
देवनी वाक्य नी मनमु नेरवेस्तो उन्नाली देवर वाक्य नन्हा नेरवेस्ता
नॉट ओनली लर्निंग
नेचकोड़ मात्रमें कादु कल्तिकोड़ मात्रल्ला
डू डेट वर्ड
आवाक्य नी चे यादम आवाक्य दंते नेच
देन यू प्रेश विथ अथॉरिटी
अप्पुड़ अधिकारम तमर बोधिंच कल्गुता आग अधिकार दिन नी बोधिस बोध
फिलिपियन
फिलिपियलक राष्ट्रपत्रिका फिलिपियर गे
चैप्टर फोर नाल गोच्छा
नाल कन्या दया
फिलिपियन चैप्टर फोर
फिलिपियलकू नाल गोच्छा फिलिपियर गे नाल कन्या दया
वर्स नाइन
तमिल दोच्छन ओमबत्न नोच्छन
वेरी इंपॉर्टेंट वर्स
चाला प्रामुख्य वन वच्छन चाला प्रामुख्य वाद वच्छन
दोस्ट थिंग्स व्हिच यू हैव बोथ लर्न्ड एंड हैव रिसीव्ड एंड हर्ड एंड सीन इन मी डू एंड डी लॉर्ड ऑफ़ पीस बी विच शल बी विथ यू
मरियो मेरो नावलना येवी नेचुकनी अंगिकरिंचित्रो नायन्दुन्नटुगा येवी विंटिरो येवी चुचित्रो अटीवाटिनी चेडी अप्पुड़ समाधानकर्ता कु देवड़ो मुक्तोड़े उन्नो नीव यावदनन निंदा कलित्तू होंदीदिरो मत्त यावदनन अनलिक केलिक कंडीरो अदन्य माड़ता पनिरी ईगे माटिदरे शांतिदायक नदा देवरू निमंदिगिरवनो
टू लेटर वर्ड डू
रेंडु लेटरला पदमु चे युडम नोटरले माड़ुवो
चे युडी
चे युडी माड़ीरी
पन्से सीनरी सर्वेंट ऑफ़ गॉड आस्क मी
ओका सीनरी देवन सेवकुन नडिगडू अब दोट तिरिया सेवकु नमन केलिद्रो
राव डी होली कान्वोकेशन इस कमिंग अप
रावरु मरी होली कान्वोकेशन उस्तांदी रावरे होली कान्वोकेशन बरतायदे
इन सम्प्लेस इन आंध्र प्रदेश
आंध्र प्रदेश लोकस्थलमलो आंध्र प्रदेश दिलों दिस तालदली
व्हाट शुड वी गिव वेज डी थीम
मरी मुख्य आमशम एम इद्दाम मन मुख्य आमशम नायन कोड़ा नांत केलिद्रो
देन आई सेड
नन्हा नानो
डू डू
चे युडी माड़ीरी
नथिंग एल्स डू
इनके एम लेद चे युडी इन एन इल्ला माड़ीरी
आई सेड दिस इस व्हाट इस लाकिंग इन आवर मिट्टी
मना मज्जलो इधे कोरतका उन्नन नम्म मज्जदली इधु कोरते इधे अंत
वो आर फुल ऑफ़ वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड
देवनी वाक्यमु संपूर्णगन निंडुपन
वो आर सराउंडेड बाय डी वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड
देवनी वाक्यमु तोने छुट्टुकनुन्नाम देवर वाक्य दिन छुट्टुमंडिद एट्टू दिरिगिना एट्टू दिरिगिस उस्ना वाक्य
इट दिरिगिस वाक्य इट दिरिगिस वाक्य छोट वो आर सराउंडेड बाय डी वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड
एट्टू दिरिगिना वाक्य मिड्डू दिरिना अड़िदिना सो देवनी वाक्यमु छुट्टुमुट्टु पट्टा यावकड़े तिरिगुड़ा देवर वाक्य
एंड देयर इस लोट ऑफ़ डी एंपसीस ऑफ़ डी वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड इन आवर मीटिंग्स
मरी मना कुड़ीकल्लो गुड़ा चुनी देवनी वाक्यमु इंतो नोकी नोकी मल्लमल्ले नोकी नोकी जत्ता नम्म कुटगलिकुड़ा देवर वाक्यन वत्ती 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 अल्टवे
बट येट वी डोंट सी रिजल्ट्स
आयननो पलितम छोड़म आदरे पलितवन नोड़ो
यस्टरडे आई सेड
नेड़ दम चेप्पनो निन्हे नेड़
टू थिंग्स आर एसेंशियल फॉर चर्च ग्रोथ
संगा यदुगुदलकु रेंडु विषयाल इंत आवसरम चेप्प सभै अभ्रितिगा गे एरु विषयगल आवश्यक
फर्स्टली
मदले दागी
स्पिरिचुअल नरिश्मेंट ऑफ़ डी चर्च
संगमुलो आत्मय पोषण सभैली आत्मिक पोषण
एंड सेकंडली
रेंडु दागी
स्पिरिचुअल बिहेवियर ऑफ़ डी चर्च
संगमुलो आत्मसंबंधमयन प्रवर्तन सभैली आत्मिक वाज़न स्पन्नन स्पन्नन उन्नल्ला आत्मिक वंदा उन्द स्पन्नन
व्हाट इस योर स्प ब ब कंस्ट्रक्टिव स्पन्ना कंस्ट्रक्टिव रिएक्शन तू व्हाट यू हैव बीन रिसीविंग फ्रॉम डी वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड
देवनी वाक्यमु लुन्ची मीरे रेते पुंडुतुनारो दानी की प्रतिगा मरी निर्माणात्मक मन स्पन्नन मीन उन्दी एन टी यला कुंदी अन विषय देवर वाक्य दिन नी वेन उन्दुतायदरो अदक्य बदलागी
तू हो
नीव यावरी तली स्पन्न
तू हो मच यू हैव ओवरेड डी वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड
एंत मट्टुकु इधे देवनी वाक्य नी मन लोबर्डाम यस्टरडे वर्गे देवर वाक्य के वालगागी देव
वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड से
देवना कमेंट दें देवर वाक्य अल्टदे
सिंपल डेफिनेशन ऑफ़ डी शिन
पापन के इंतो सामान्यम निर्वचन जत्तुन पापके सामान्य वाद उन्द अर्थाकोर्तायदे
ट्रांसग्रेशन ऑफ़ लॉ इस शिन
आग्ना तिक्रममे पापमु आत्ने मीर नडियोदे पाप
डेट आग्ना नॉट ओनली डी लॉ ऑफ़ मोज़
आग्ना अंते केवल मोशा दर्मशास्त्र मात्रमें कादु आत्ने अंदर मोशा दर्मशास्त्र मात्रल्ला
डी एंटायर वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड
देवनी वाक्यमु संपूर्णमगा योबर्ना वाक्य देवर संपूर्ण वाद वाक्य
एंड अल्सो डी काउंसुल एंड डी इंस्ट्रक्शंस डेट वी गेट फ्रॉम डी चर्च
आतरवाता संगमुलो नुन्नी मन किवेबड़े मरी देवसंबंध मन सूचन लो आदेशल गावच आमले द सभै इंदा कोर्तारवंता दाईविक वादंता सूचनेगलो आदेशगलो
एवरी वीक इट इस अनाउंस्ड
सारी कुर्तो पपा
सारी इट इस अनाउंस्ड
प्रतिवारम विदंगा प्रकटन चेवरत एकन प्रतिवार इरितिली प्रकटिसल परददे
10:00 वी गैदर फॉर डी टाइम ऑफ़ वर्षिप
मरी आराधना कोरकु उदयम पदि घंटलो मन कुड़कुंटा आराधने गागी आत्त घंटिगिना वो सेर बरते वंथेली
होम वी आर फर्स्ट टेकन डीज़ डी कमांडमेंट
दानी ओका आग्नला गामलो एंत मंद जिसकुंटा मंडी अदन्य आत्ने इंतना वेस्ट जना तवलतिवरी
वो हैव टेकन इट इन डिली
मेमु डिलीलो अला जिसकुनाम नाव डिलीले आरितिल तवल
यू ने इन गुडोर
गुडोर
लव वे डी फ्लेस
मान मास्तलमलो गुडोर नल तवलतिवरी
वो टूक इट एक्स फ्रॉम डी रोड
अधि देवनुन्नु वच्चनट्टी का जिसकुनाम अधु देवरीन दा बंदा हाकित तवल
इमाटके लोबर्डकुपोते वेरे माटलकु मन वेटल लोबर्डकलम
इमाटके लोबर्डकुपोते मरी वेरे माटल कला लोबर्डकलुता इमातिके ना वालगागी लिलंद्रे नाव वेरे मातिया वृत्तील वालगात
10:00 वर्षिप
पदि घंटलो आराधना आत्त घंटिगाराधने
इकड़े एवर उन्नर
इकड़े एवर उन्नर आत्सम
हार्मनिस्टो कायंटरु अबलिस्टो अर्गरिस्टो
हार्मनिस्टो
अन्नी इस्टली बोलन रोंटाइर
अबलिस्टो अंत इस्टली इस्टली मात्रम उत्तर हार्मनिया अवरो तबलाद अवर मात्र आयर्तार
सम्मेल्डर्स विल बी येल
अकोन्द मंद पद्दल उन्नर
डी एंटायर
इरिया
एंटायर हॉल इस एमटी
मरी गाई हाल अंत गुड़ा खाली गण उन्नद हाल इल्ला खाली आगिर्तदे
10:30
पदि नारा आत्तोरे
11:00
पदकुंडु
वी फाइंड ट्रिकल्स यू नो वन बाय वन वन बाय वन
अकड़ा अकड़ा चुकल चुकल गोकर 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 गर्पिस्ता अल्ली ओबोबरु ओबोबरु कांच इक्तार
इधि तिरनाला
इधे तिरनाल नंदी इधे जात्रेना
मेला
मेलाना इधि इधि मेलाना
इट इस वेरी सैड
इधि चाला विचारम इधि भाळा विचारकर
हो कम वो आर नॉट एबल तू कम बिफोर 10:00
मरी पदि घंटलो कुमुंद मरी इंदुकु राले कुपोतना मंडी आत्त घंटिगमुंचन वो आक्क बरली
नॉट एट 10:00 बिफोर 10:00 डी होल कांग्रेगेशन शुड बी येयर
पदि घंटल अंते पदि घंटलो कुराड़न कादु पदि घंटलो कुमुंदे सर्व समाजम वच्चुंडल्ला आत्त घंटे अंत आत्त घंटिगला आत्त घंटिगमुंचे इट इस सभै बंदरबेक
इन 50's एंड 60's आई हैव सीन
यावलो अरवलो ने चूसन आत्तू आयुवत अरवत्र
बक्सिंग कम्स एंड से लेट अस प्रे
बक्सिंग और उच्ची रेंडी प्रात्र जैस्कुनाम अंतगे बक्सिंग और बंदु बनी प्रार्थना मणनंद्रे
बाय डी टाइम होल कांग्रेगेशन इस देयर आफ्टरवर्ड आई हैव नॉट सीन एन्यूबरी कमिंग
आना माटा चप्पक मुनुपे समाजम तक कुच्चन उन्तदि अब तदान तरवातिंग एवर उच्चनट्टी ने झुले आम अवर अमाच्याल दिकिन्त मुंचे इट इस सभै कुतिर्तदे अनंत्र यार बंदा हाक नोडलीला
यवरी डी वर्ल्ड अदर कंटेस्ट वन आई बेंड मरी प्रभाव टाइम बिफोर टाइम एवरी डी होल कांग्रेगेशन इस देयर
मरी प्रभावशन लो वेरे देशाल कुड़ा ने संदर्शित नपड़ा अकड़े गुड़ा समयानिकी मुंदे चुनी समाजम तक अकड़े उन्नरम ने चूसन प्रभावशन दिली वेरे वेरे देशगलिकी नान होगुआगा अल्ली कुड़ा समय की सरियागी सभै उद्दन
ओनली हेयर वी फाइंड इन आवर इंडिया पीपल आर वेरी केयरलेस एंड रेक्लेस
इकड़ा भारत देशमुलो ने प्रजलो इंतो निर्लक्ष्य इंतो अस्रद्धत उत्तर इधि भारत देश दिली प्रजगल इस्तो निर्लक्ष्य अस्रद्ध इंदेर्तार
इट इस फ्रॉम डी लैंड इट इस फ्रॉम डी लैंड रिवर्स ऑफ़ लिविंग वाटर्स फ्लोड आउटसाइड डी वर्ल्ड
चुरंडी इधि देशमुन्ने इधि बुमिनुन्ने जीव जलन नदिला ऊटलो मरी प्रभावशन निकी परली पारिंदी इधि देश जिन्दली जीव द बुक बुके जलवो हरितायदे वितर देशगलिके
दोस्ट वो गोट ट्रेन इन वेरिस्ट असम्बलीज इंडिया व्हेन दे गोट अब्रॉड वेंड एंड अब्रॉड दे स्टार्टेड असम्बलीज एंड दे आर ग्राइंग
चुरंडी आय संगलो तरपिदु बंदी वेरे देशाल विदेशाल केली अकड़ा संगलो पेटी वाले इंतो अभ्रुति पोत्र इंतो यदुकुतुनार वाल आया सभेगले तरबेतिन हुंदी वेरे वेरे देशगलिकोगी सभेगलन कट्टी अभ्रित आता
बट व्हाट अबाउट अस
मरी मन संगत एंडी नम्म विषय
व्हाय देयर इस लोट ऑफ़ नेगलिजेंस एंड केयरलेसनेस
इंदुकु मन मज्जलो इंत निर्लक्ष्यता इंत अस्रद्ध याके नम्म मज्जदली निर्लक्ष्य अस्रद
हो लॉन्ग इट शुड कंटिन्यू लाइक दिस
इंत कालम इलागे कोनसागुतदंदी यस्तु काला इरितिली सायोकतदर
दिस टेल्स अस वेरी वेरी क्लीयरली लेट मी टेल यू अंदर अस्तर डी वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड वो आर नॉट वॉकिंग वर्डी ऑफ़ गॉड
देनी विषयमुलो देवनी अधिकारमु दो देवनी वाक्य अधिकारमु चप्पे विषयमेंट अंत एमीको मनमु देवनिकी तागिनटुगा नडिचकोवट लेदु इधि विषय दिली अधिकार दिन देवरली नाव हेलो दिन अंतंद्रे नाव देवरागी तक्कंते नाव नडितायला
आई हैव ड्राइवर एट होम इन डिली
डिलीलो मा ड्राइवर नडु डिलीले नम्मा ड्राइवर इदार
वी टेक्स्ट मी तू वेरिस्ट प्लेसेस नियर बाय एंड अल्सो वी हेल्प मी
मरी देखर प्रांतलो मरी इंत देखर आ ड्राइवर नाक सायपर्ता उन्तर इधि हत्तरहत्र तालगलिको गोगलिकागी आ ड्राइवर नन्हा के सहाय मर्ता आयर्तार
एंड वी अल्सो हेल्प्स वन लेडी इन डी कॉलिनी
आइथे आमा कॉलिनीलो इधि ड्राइवर इनकोका स्त्रीकी गुड़ा सायपर्ता उन्तर नम्मा कॉलिनीली इधे ड्राइवर इन्नोपा सहोदरीगे सहाय मर्ता आयर्तार
सी बिरॉन्ट डी सेक्ट कॉल्ड सनातन धर्म
सनातन धर्म अने दानीकी अने गुंबुकु चेन्दिन व्यक्ति आस्त्री आस्त्री सनातन धर्म अन्न वंत गुंपी के सेरिदाके
अर्ली मनिंग 5:30 दिस लाई हस्ट टू टेकर तू डेट हॉल वेयर डी गैदर
मरी तलवार गाने आइदुनार घंटलो कु मरी ड्राइवर आस्त्रीनी आवला ध्यानस्थान निकी दीसकेल बेलिगिना समय आइदु वरी घंटीगे आवर ध्यानस्थानक्या के ना करकुंडोपतायदा
वेरी बिग हॉल
डेट डी हॉल उन्तदि डोट डी हॉल इर्तदे
हॉल डी चप्पल्स आर डी चप्पल स्टैंड डी लीव टू लीव
वाले कुड़ा चप्पल स्टैंड अंदर चप्पल स्टैंड चप्पल उल्लेख आवर कुड़ा चप्पल स्टैंड इर्तदे अल्ली बिडबेक
एंड एवरीवन इस वेयरिंग वाइड ड्रेस
अंदरु तल्लनी वस्त्रल दरिंसकुटर एलरु बिली बट्टा किर्तार
जुब्बा पैजामा
जुब्बा पैजामा इसकुटर जुब्बा पैजामा किर्तार
नॉट डेट यू नो फॉर एनी अदर रीजन
अति एदो कारण चतनी कादुगनी यावदो कारण दिन अल्ला
दे वांट तू डिपिक डेट वो आर ऑल इक्वल मन मन बिफोर गॉड
देवनी यदुता मन मंद्रमु समानमु अनी चुपिंचड़ अनिकला इसकुटर देवर मुंदे ना वेलरु कुड़ा वंदे समान अन्न तोर्सायदे
इन डेट देयर आर करोड़ पति लकपति आर नो पति
मरी वार समाजमुलो लकपति लो करोड़पति लो नोपति लो अरे एपति अवर समाजमु लक्षा अधिपति इर्बोद करोड़पति वेरे इनार्दर इर्बोद
बाय 5:30 डी ड्राइवर टेल्स मी डी होल कांग्रेगेशन इस देयर
पोत्तुना आइदुनार घंटलो कु ड्राइवर जत्ता नाकु आइदुनार घंटा अंदर उच्च कुच्चन तरंट अकड़ा आ ड्राइवर एल्टार बेलिगिना जावा आइदु वरी घंटी एलरु मंद कुच्चकोल्टार
एंड आफ्टरवर्ड नोबरी कम्स
Then if you don't come, what does it mean? You are disobeying. But the problem is, we don't understand it.
We don't think that you are disobeying a commandment from the church. May God help us.
Lord Jesus Christ is going to come again. When he would come, he did not tell us. He told us certain signs before he would come. All signs are already happening all over the world. Time is very high, very close. We should be very, very vigilant and diligent and coming to the house of God.
Devaera manega baravonta visya delina veslo jaguru karaaki.
Can we expect you all before time tomorrow at ten o'clock? Can we expect you all before time tomorrow at ten o'clock?
Naale belige hatte gantige, samayake munchena nimanodtina.
Special meeting, special time.
Nine o'clock in Delhi, we gather at ten o'clock.
Before nine o'clock, is it possible?
It is possible.
Make breakfast night each hour.
I will tell you my testimony.
Night each hour, who will make upma or dalaya or something else, parathra and all that.
We don't make anything in the night.
Bread and jam and butter. Bread, jam, butter, yes, it's going to change. And some, boil it, mix it and put it in sandwich.
Yes, I did not have car also.
We have to change two buses to go to the place. I give them their lunch, their breakfast.
Eat it in the bus.
Busro tine nantana. To save time. Testimony is. J S R's family is there before, half an hour before time.
Samayake araganta munche J S R's kutumbalirtade.
After a few more families would come like that. So when it is possible during the week, why it is not possible on Sunday?
Varamulo sadhamaithe, adivaram enduku sadhamukadu. Varavella sadhavadre, bhaanuvarayaaki sadhagodila.
Walk worthy of God. If we have got respect and reverence for God.
Devaera pakshadali nimigga gaurava mariyadugalidre.
In every situation, you will be very diligent, very, very important for him.
Prati, paristitulaprati visyamulaguda, mari devani koraku mirento chunnanga untaru, ento jagratata untar.
May God help us to do so. We will have a small break and then we will come again for the second session.
Samelo chinnaviraam thiskuntam, mari tarvata rendu bhaganukithirigostam.
Shall we pray? Come on your knees please, it is good. Our loving heavenly Father. Our gracious and wonder-working God. We thank thee for the word ministered unto us. Help us that we may be very carefully in doing thy word and thus we may walk worthy of God.
Prabha ni vaakyamunu neraveetchutalo, prabha maak sahimsheni athlu, devani tagnatuka, me marnachkunatuka.
Pray with thanksgiving in Jesus' precious name.
This is my emblem, let's nobody part us, thank you, our part of one part of them. As a model, they just see every name, they go to washroom, go in, go out, water, go in, go out, they swim, they come. Brothers' washrooms, sisters' washrooms, second floor, brothers' washrooms, women's, shundi. At like sisters' washrooms, sisters' washrooms, gate, truck, go men's shundi. Our part of them, Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu, watch me.
Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Swatantrinchu konedarga, vare samastam. Swatantrinchu konedarga, vare samastam. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Yavare duru chuduru, samsiddh laduru. Yavare duru chuduru, samsiddh laduru. Prabhu Rakanava rasinturum, konipova Krista Vaachnum. Prabhu Rakanava rasinturum, konipova Krista Vaachnum. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Yesu shishulatho palke, irgi vatunani. Yesu shishulatho palke, irgi vatunani. Siddha paratchu salamnu, nenunna chodda mirunna. Siddha paratchu salamnu, nenunna chodda mirunna. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Yavare sunitho nadathuru, hasti kamathuru. Yavare sunitho nadathuru, hasti kamathuru. Melkoniyunna varini, Prabhu Krista konipovnu. Melkoniyunna varini, Prabhu Krista konipovnu. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Chanamuloni, maharpu chendhi, elthapadham. Chanamuloni, maharpu chendhi, elthapadham. Mamnu siddha parachina, triesnu, sanneetum. Mamnu siddha parachina, triesnu, sanneetum. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Bahumanam, bondedham, Prabhu Nikori, Kaidem. Bahumanam, bondedham, Prabhu Nikori, Kaidem. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Sadakabuni, thodanundi, sutichellincha ramu. Sadakabuni, thodanundi, sutichellincha ramu. Adhutamu, adinamu, yavaru varnim paleragam. Adhutamu, adinamu, yavaru varnim paleragam. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Swatantrinchu konedarga, vare samastam. Swatantrinchu konedarga, vare samastam. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum. Jai Swari尼婆va, Prabhu Yesu Vaachnum.
Krishna jivita, belagissu vanta do, prakashissu vanta jivita.
And Christian life is a life of discipline.
Adi vidhanga, Krishna jivita manadi, krama shikshana to kudina jivita.
Krishna jivita vandu krama shikshana dinda kudidinta jivita. Christian life is a life of mission. There is a name, there is a target.
Krishna jivita manadi, okapani nikali gunthundi, okagurini kaligundundi, okalakshamunikali gunthundi.
Krishna jivita vandu karavan hundirtade, vandu lakshavandu gurian hundirtade. And Christian life is a life of faith.
Ante kadhu, Krishna jivita viswasmutto kudina jivita.
Asta maatrevella Krishna jivita, nambike enda kudida. Second Corinthians five seven six.
Rendho korinti, aydu edulantadu.
Edu korinti, aydu edrala tanay. We walk by faith, not by sight.
Velichuputho kaka, viswasmutto memanadutmu.
Navu nodu vaga, navu nodu oragi nadide, nambu oragi nadithave. As we walk one way of God.
Devani kithaginettiga, manu nadustukun, nadutuntaga.
Devariyogiragi, navu nadibekadre. Faith plays vital role.
Viswasmunadi, kelakapatra posistundi.
Nambike embodhu, pratteka vadanda patra vannostade. Without faith, we cannot make any progress.
Viswasmulekundan, manu munduku saga le mandi.
Nambikelede, namu mundikesaga kagaadilari. It is in the faith we should abound more and more.
Ee viswasmunandu, antakantaku manu abhiruddhi pandali.
Ee nambikele, na vechcha agi abhiruddhi hundubekku. See, we see one portion from Romans one seventeen.
Romelakrashmatrika, murder jam, padhiyadavachnum, nakubagansustam.
Roma vandu hadinayadrali, vandu bhagavannudathave, hadinayadrali. Romans one seventeen.
Romelaku murder jamu, padhiyedavachnum.
Roma vandu hadinayadrali. There, we read like this.
Kedega vegina chauttnam.
Here ite lotte. For therein is the righteousness of God, revealed from faith to faith, as it is written, just shall live by faith.
Endukanina, neetiman thudu viswasmulamuga, jivinchuni, vraybadina prakaramu, viswasmulamuga, antakantaku viswasmu kaligunatlu, devani neeti daaniyandu bala parshubadichunadheen.
Hey gandre, devariyindadarku neetiyo, adarali thori varuthade, neeti vantanu nambike endale, badukon nimba, shastrotthiya prakara, aa neetiyo nambike palavagiddo, nambikeenu prakatisvanta daagide. From faith to faith, we grow.
Viswasmundi, antakantaku viswasmu koraku edukuttuntam.
Nambike enda, echcha agi nu, nambikege, belitaiirtave. How did we come to Christ?
Krishna gurathaku, yala gacham?
Kristana kadiyavaretelibandide. It is through faith.
Viswasmudharani.
Nambike endale. How that faith was inculcated in our life?
Manu jivitamulo, ee viswasmu yala punduparchupadindi?
Ee nambike embodhu, namu jivitali, avaretelibandide. Romans ten seventeen.
Roma padipadhiyedu.
Romans ten seventeen.
Romelaku padipadhiyedu.
Roma athvathnayalu. Faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word of God.
Vinutavalanaviswasmu kaligunu, vinuta, krishunu, guchina, maatalavala kaligunu.
Sarida, vaartey, nambikega adara, vaartey kristana vaakyave adara. Through the word of God, by the power of the whole faith, faith was inculcated in our life.
Devani vaakyumudara, parishuddhaatmevka, prerinachata, ee devani vaakyumanandali, viswasmunala, pempandimpa jastha.
Devara vaakyindha, pavitraatmanap prerinindha, ee nambike endale, namu jivitali, vandikeen martan. By the hearing of the word of God.
Ata devani vaakyavinutadvara.
Devara vaakyuni kereduramulaka. So, in order to continue in faith, we should continue in the word of God.
Viswasmulamunam, manu kurasagalante, devani vaakyumulakonasagatla, kurasagali.
Now, devara vandu nambikele, konisagbekadre, devara vaakyadeli, konisagbekku. Having faith and word of God goes hand in hand.
Avadi devani vaakyuma viswasmunadi, maru okattanokadi kalisi, velledigantunde.
Devara vaakyavu, nambike embodhu, vandakvandu, seeri nadivantadaagide. John's Gospel.
Johann Swartau.
Chapter eight, verse thirty one.
Envidavajam, upayakatavachnum.
Entumothundu. John's Gospel, eight thirty one.
Johann Swartau, envidavajam, upayakatavachnum.
Lord says, if he continues in my word, then are ye my disciples.
Esra vandadu, miru na vaakyamundu, nilichinavarete, minijamugana, akshishila, yunduru.
Aga esu tananam, devare, niunana vaakyadeli, niligundavadre, nijavaginana, shisha ragirvari. Yeah, if you continue in my word, you are my disciples.
Miru na vaakyamundu, nilichinavarete, nijamugana, akshishila, entar.
Niunana vaakyadeli, nintiruvadre, nijavaginana, shisha ragirtari. And Romans chapter fourteen, verse twenty two.
Roma padnalugu, ivarindhalu.
Roma athnalaki, padthedrali. Sorry, Acts, Acts fourteen, twenty two, I think. Fourteen twenty two, ah? Acts, chapter fourteen, verse twenty two.
Apostolakaramu, padnalakirvarindu.
Apostolakritigalatna. Confirming the souls of the disciples and exhorting them to continue in the faith and that we must, through much tribulation, enter into the kingdom of God.
Shishul, shishulamanasulano, drodapaarchi, viswasmunandu, nelakadaga, undavalanani, anekasramalanu, nubhainchi, manamu devani rajjumulapraveshimpavalanani, varini, echcharinchiri.
Naavu bahu sankatagala taali, devara rajjidolgi, seerebekimbo daagi, echcharike, matan, heli, kristanambekele, stiravagiri, endavarnu, dai. Exhortation is to continue in faith.
Echcharimpeintante, viswasmunandu, nelakadaga, undali.
Echcharike, nandre, nambikele, stiravagirbekku. Without faith, you cannot be a believer.
Viswasmulekundanu, viswasi ga kalevu.
Nambikelede, ni viswasi agirlari. But our assemblies are filled with unbelieving believers.
Maru, sangaalanee, aviswassulaina, viswassulato, nindipanay.
Sabegalala, kuda, aviswassigala, aviswassigala, viswasinthumide. Because they don't practice Christianity, they don't practice faith, they don't practice what you have learned.
Endukantae, varu neetchukunadi, maru, vari, krishalamlo, ee viswasmunadi, dani, abhyasamuchero.
Our kalthukondadu, Krishna jivitali, nambikeen, abhyasistaila. We should continue in faith, there is no other way to grow in the grace of the Lord.
Rabu yoka, devu yoka, kripalo, manu abhiruddhi pandalante, manu viswasmulam, nelakadaga, nilichindal.
Devara kripelina, abhiruddhi agbekadre, nambikele, naunintirubekku. Mark's Gospel.
Mark Swartau.
Chapter eleven, verse twenty two.
Padakondavajam, ivarindavachnum.
Mark's Gospel, eleven twenty two.
Marku, padakundu, ivarindu.
And Jesus answering Satan to them, have faith in God.
Andu case varito itanu, miru devaniyandu, viswasmunchudi.
Esu edanandre, nimage devareli, nambikeerli. Have faith in God.
Devaniyandu, viswasmunchudi.
Devareli, nambikeerri. That's what the Lord said.
Devadantu, prabhadantu, nedikram.
Kartanadan, eetaidane. Now see Mark's Gospel.
Hipujani, Mark Swartau.
Markanswar. Chapter eleven, verse twenty seven.
Padakondavajam, miru edavachnum.
Anndi padthed. And Jesus looking upon them, says, with men, it is impossible, but not with God, for with God, all things are possible.
Maru devu valachu si, edi manusualala, asadhumkani, devani kisamastamuno, sadhimay.
Adanodu, idu, manusariga, asadha, vader, devariyelavu, sadhavay. For God, all things are possible.
Devani kisamastamuno, sadhimay.
Devariyelavu, sadhavay. So, I noticed some people, parathyananga, edo, dushtrunar.
Kothamandi, parathyananga, edo, dushtrunarandi.
Kelavu, ekkada, ekkada, nodutai, devare. There is something called body language.
Body language, not untadin.
Sharirada, vandu, bhasha iruthade.
Untalika, unni. Unni.
By the body language, I can understand how much you are focusing on the word of God.
Me body language, me deha, dani, bati, miri, ekkada dushtrunarani, telespatanakku.
Nimas sharirada, chalanegalindana, oni, vellik, okta, idrana, kirkobodu. Ah, the way you sit, your posture, by your behavior, we know how much you are paying attention.
Miru kuchina, vidhanama, miru, chusunadu, antakura, chustae, me, gamanam, ekkada, na, ma, kardamaita, dikram.
No, niukothiro, do, niu, maartaira, nodurare, nimma. I repeat, you pay attention for some time.
Oru, kothi samemu, dechismi, gamanayikadunchalani.
Suruksamemu, nimma, gamanam, kadekodru. For God, all things are possible.
Devani kisamastamuno, sadhimay.
Devariyikisamastavu, sadhavay. Lord also said.
Prabhu, marla, annadu.
Kartanamathetanay. For men are also, all things are possible.
Manusula kuda, samastamusadhimay.
Manusariki, samastavusadhavay. Ay, is it true?
Adi nijavena?
Adi nijavena? Am I saying right?
Neu, sariganajaptunana?
Nan, saragelthaidin. Lord said, for men also, all things are possible.
Maru, manusula kuda, samastavusadhimay.
Manusariki, samastavusadhavay. But when?
Eppudu?
Yavada? When you have faith in God.
Devaniyandu, neeku, viswasmunappudu.
Devareli, niinigi, nambike. Very, very important verse I am reading.
Chala, chala, pramukkavachnum, chauttunanu.
Balapramukkavachnum. I practice it, that is why I am saying.
Deen, neen, abhyasamuchesinandandi, andike, neen, me, chappakalutunanu.
Idanana, naan, abhyasamadidin, adikke, naan, neen, me, gehet. Mark's Gospel.
Mark Swartau.
Chapter nine.
Tomidavajam.
Verse twenty three.
Rirmudavachnum.
Markanswar, tombo, tipatmuru. Jesus said unto him, if thou canst believe, all things are possible to him that believes, all things are possible to him that believes, all things are possible to him that believes.
Mark Swartau, tomidir, rirmudu, andu case, nummuta, nevalanai, the, namuvaaniki, samastamusadhimay, namuvaaniki, samastamusadhimay, namuvaanikisamastamusadhimay.
Yes, so, vanege, niinakaili, haagu, agidranithio, nambu, vanege, ellavu, agodu, nambide, vanege, ellavatade. Lord said unto Ma, Martha.
Maru.
Hey, enti, miru, pillalu, hey, neega, jepeli.
Aru, ochchana, gamun, kuttal, ajitu, martadodu, aravamana?
Ah, come, chapan, miru.
Maru, Rabu, Rabu, Marku, to, Mark Swartu, maru, Martha, to, japtunadi, mada.
Kartanu, Martha, lege, mahtetanay. John's Gospel, eleven forty.
Um, Johann Swartau, padakundu, nalapay.
Johann Swartau, anndu, nalavatthu. If you believe, you will see the glory of God.
Amani, naminitlate, devu, mani, mani, manu, chutuvanat.
Amani, nambide, devara, mayimene, kaanavi, entetay. Why we are not able to see the glory of God in our midst?
Manamadhalu, devani, mayimano, manam, endukuchudale, kaputunam.
Namamadhalu, devarama, himena, naun. We don't trust him as much we should trust him.
Aanu, manu, nammavale, sinantaka, namvale, kaputunam.
Athanu, nammo, naavu, nambo, stavare, ke, namuthaila. We trust man rather than God.
Maru, devani kabaduka, manusin, namuthunam.
Naavu, devariyegadalagi, manusarana, namthaidhavay. We depend upon people around us.
Manu chuttunna, manusula, vayip, adharapaduttuntam.
Namasuttalirvanta, manusarame. Instead of depending upon God.
Devani, me, adharapadadani, baduka.
Devaramela, adharapadad. Instead of trusting him.
Aanu, namme, dani, baduka.
Athran, nambo, dani, badalagi. We trust some men who are important in the church.
Sangamulo, pramukkulaina, var, evarena, unte, varla, me, da, namuthuntam.
Sabeyali, aradru, pramukkavadavare, idre, aurmeela. They think their lives are hid in them.
Andu, var jivitamelo, varla, lo, daichupetukundu, daagi, nanatukajastha.
Naavu, jivitali, aurali, adikukundatane, aurali, idem, daagi, martar. I am telling God servants.
Maru, devan, sevilgattaro.
Devan, sevilgattare. No man called us.
Ee, manusudu, maun, velaledu.
Yaavu, manusarana, mani, karili. It is God of heaven who called us to serve him.
Akashamandunna, devu, aanu, sevunchukum, me, pilichenu.
Akashadali, vantana, namadevu, namanathanu, sevamalikaridi. Our loyalties are towards God, not towards any man.
Wow, kabati, ma, namakattamu, ma, viswasyatanadi, manusula, vayip, kadhu, devan, vayip.
Namam, nambike embodhu, manusarakadigala, devarakadige. Many times, we depend upon man around us.
Chunni, chala, saru, manu, chuttunna, manusula, me, adharapaduttuntam.
Anekisari, nodri, naavu, ma, kaanuvthiruv. That is why we are not able to exercise faithfully.
Andu case, sampurnumuga, visya, viswasan, ni, manu, jivitamulo, abhyasamchale, kaputunam.
Adukaga, paripurnavanta, nambikeen, abhyasamalikak. We are our own believers without belief.
Maru, viswassulamani, chupukuntunam, kani, viswasmulekundanuntunam.
Nam, viswassigala, enda, gehetave, adar, nambikele, oragi. But God is faithful.
Kani, devu, namadagnavadu, adar, devu, nammatakavnu.
You know why?
Endukadelsa?
He has chosen us, the world's foundation.
Bhoomipunadu, vebadu, munupay, neenu, me, airparchukontiniertha.
Bhoomi, astava, aakadukinta, munchena, ni, manu, arskontin. That is why he is faithful.
Anduke, aanu, namadagnavad.
Adukke, athan, nammatakavnu. Second Timothy.
Endo, timoti.
Chapter two, verse thirteen.
Rendavajam, padamudavachnum.
Edu. There, we understand, in spite of unbelief, he had been faithful to us.
Manu, appanamakamuga, unnanu, aanu, namadagnavadana, dani, kikka, manu, akamata, dushtrunam.
Now, up. Naavu, appanambegastragidharu, athan, nambigastragayiruvanu, tanna, savakirudhavag, eenu, madlaranu.
Manamu, nammadagani, varamayinano, aanu, namadagnavaduka, undunu, aanatana, sabhamuna, virudamuka, eedu, chale, edu.
We have to accept that we have been with unbelief living many times.
Manamu, appanamakamuga, leda, viswasmule, leni, varamuga, konisal, unnanavu, opukalsinde.
Anekisari, namu, nambikele, oragi, appanambegastragidhavu, opukalebekku. We pray to him without faith on him.
Aanu, viswasmunchakaye, aanatprathanjastutam.
Athanali, nambikeedla, arvane, athani, prathnamartave. What is prayer?
Prathanantendandi.
Prathanandrentri. When we pray.
Manu, pradichrapudu.
Now, prathnamadvaka. You are saying, oh Lord, I depend upon you.
Oh Prabha, neenu, neemida, adharapaduttunanu, vanantram.
Oh, kartanana, ninmeela, adharapadthaidin, antave. Oh Lord, nive, ma, dikku.
Oh Deva, oh Prabha, nive, ma, dikku, antam.
Oh Devare, nire, namige, dikku. That is what Jehoshaphat prayed when great company attacked him.
Maru, gop, jana, samu, sainamu, and muttadinsnapuru, Jehoshaphat, yesna, prathanadi.
Dotta, sainidharu, athanige, muttigaku, aga, Jehoshapattanu, maadida, prathne, adu. He had wonderful faith in God.
Aanaku, devan, me, adputavara, viswasmundi.
Athanige, devaramela, adputavadanta, nambike. He did not go to the neighboring things.
Kabati, samantara, azuladakarik, poli, asamamilo.
Adukaga, athanu, samantaa, suttalirvanta, raja, atthar, ogli, la. He entered into the house of God.
Devani, mandrulala, praveshichinadu.
Devara, mandruladu, khodanu. Declared first.
Motthamadu, prakatani, yesnadu.
Madanadagi, prakatani, maadidinu. Young and old, even the suckling child, they were all assembled in the house of God.
Maru, yavanu, rudhulu, maru, channapalu, taga, chanti, pillalu, to, saitham, mandar, kuda, devan, mandrava, samakuchupada.
Yalla, rudharu, yavanastaru, chikkamakalu, saitha, devaramandhali, seerbandru. He offered a wonderful prayer.
Adputavane, prathnanjeshanakka.
Adputavadanta, prathnamadidin. That speaks of his dependence, that speaks of his faith in God.
Devaniyandu, aanaku, enta, viswasmunandadi, adhe, viswachupchuputam.
Devarela, athan, gist, nambikee, dambodha, agi, adu, torstaid. Second Chronicles, chapter twenty, verse twelve.
Rendava, denavatam, tumulu, iravajam, panidavachnum.
Wonderful prayer he offered.
Fatto, annedu.
Wonderful prayer he offered.
Adputavane, prathnanjeshanakka.
Adputavada, prathnamartaidanay. That prayer is worthy of humiliating, following.
Adi, a prathana, ento, maru, dina, tumuto, vinayuto, kudina, jusunam.
A prathnesto, dina, to, dinda, vinay, dinda, kudidaagide. He says, we have no might against this great company.
Maru, gop, sainidu, dhamchadu, maaku, shakti, chaladu, antadu.
Ee, dotta, sainidu, dite, nanige, vidamalik, agadilant. And neither we know what to do.
Ee, me, chayutakunu, maaku, torchadu, ee, nu, maadve, katiyedu.
But our eyes are upon thee.
Aite, nive, maaku, dikku.
Namakannigala, ni, manu, nodutave. Oh, what a prayer that he offered.
Yalanti, prathnanandi, Jehoshapattan, yesinikka.
Jehoshapattan, enta, prathnamat. How many times you prayed like that?
Ennisarlu, new, jesa, vi, prathana?
Estu, sari, neene. Many times, we are caught up in tight corners.
Chala, sarlu, mulallo, irukkuputtuntam.
Kani, sari, mulali, sikakoltave. You pray, how can I escape from here?
Ikkanunchi, nela, tappinchukuntanu, anu, prathanjastam.
Illinda, eegi, nan, tappiskoltenem, alachchunamartave.
Ne, prathan, ga, etla, tappinchukona, alochistuntam.
Etla, tappinchukuntam, ee, mulallo, nunchana, anukuntam.
Mulai, nela, avaretel, tappiskoltenemba, daagi, alachchunamartave.
Therefore, instead of depending on God, you depend upon man, to get rescued from there.
Alag, alachchinchidavara, chundi, danunchi, tappinchukunadani, devan, me, adharapadad, baduka, manusula, me, adharapaduttuntam.
Here ite, tappiskollikke, devaramela, adharapadad, ke, badalagi, manusarame, adharapad. You have done it many times.
Ne, enno, saru, jesa, vi, pani.
Ne, nestosari, kelsa. Personally, I am telling you, many times you have done it.
Vektigatanga, kuda, chuptunanu, ne, enno, saru, jeshuntavi, pani.
Vektigatavag, ne, nestosari, dana, maadidi. When you depend upon man.
Ne, manusula, adharapadnapudu.
Ne, manusarame, adharapadaga. You bring in confusion and chaos in the body of Christ.
Maru, krishyokka, shariyamuloni, ke, kalavaramunadiskunastao.
Krishtanat, dehadolaki, ne, kalavalamunatartiya. When you depend upon man.
Ne, manusula, adharapadnapudu.
Ne, manusarame, adharapadaga. They exploit you.
Valin, dochkuntaru.
Avare, ne, dochkoltaru. They will destroy your life and ministry.
Ne, jivitamuno, ne, paricharanu, nashnamjastaru.
Ne, ne, jivitavana, ne, ne, sevenna, haal, martare. Wherever I go.
Ne, ekkada, velina?
Nan, eli, godru. Two things I say.
Rendu, visyal, japtan.
Edu, visyal. Out of my personal experience.
Andu, na, vektigata, anupavamunchi, japtan.
Idanana, vektigata, anupavadi. Firstly.
Odhika.
Odhina, daag. Bless the Lord at all times, Psalm thirty four, verse one.
Ne, ellapudu, yehovanu, sanutinchadu, upanalko, ketamadavachnum.
Motnakne, kirtan, erine, ochindali, nan, yudhini, yehov. Bless the Lord at all times.
Ne, ellapudu, yehovanu, sanutin.
Ne, nan, ju, granden.
Ellapudu, yehovanu, sanutinchadu.
Nan, yavaglu, yehovanu, santhas. Ehre guru, maine, yena, bola. You just translate what I have said. Bless the Lord at all times.
Yehovanu, ellapudu, sanutinchudi.
Ah.
Yehovanu, yavathu, santhas.
Worship him at all times.
Ellapudu, aan, naradinchudi.
Yavagla, thanan, naradesri. Pray to him at all times.
Ellapudu, aanaku, stuti, chalinchudi.
Yavagla, thanan, stuti, salisri. Irrespective in a situation.
Maru, me, parisiti, yala, unappadiki.
Ya, inim, parisiti, hege, irli. David said those words when he was being changed by Saul.
Saul chata, Davido, tharmavatunapu, japtunamata.
Saulanu, Davidana, imbalisvanta, benatvaga, hedhamaat. He said like this.
Ah, Davide, la, kontra.
I will bless the Lord at all times.
Ne, ellapudu, yehovanu, sanutinchadu.
Nan, yavaglu, yehovanu, kirtisvenu. My wife was called to glory.
Maru, na, bharaya, maymula, pillabandhi.
Nan, endati, maymula. In a train accident in nineteen eighty nine.
Bantavala, yana, vaytomu, loka, train, gurugatana, manichindi.
Kattamuthra, embathramuthra, reyli, napagatadali.
Alanti, parisitla, kuda.
Anta, parisitli, kuda. I and my children bless the Lord at all times.
Neenu, na, pillalu, maru, ellapudu, yehovanu, sanutinchnam.
Nanu, namakali, yavaglu, yehovanu, stuti, sidhav. We consecrated that very situation unto the Lord.
A, parisitini, maru, devani kipratishtajeshisnam.
A, parisitijana, devariyegipratishtiskund. And thus, I and my children could experience the grace of God being sufficient unto us to bear that emptiness, that situation.
A, parisitini, maru, na, bharalani, a, khalitramuno, maru, attlu, prabhu, kapakinsukundvara, aanakrupa, chata, me, nimpa, padam.
A, parisitijandre, nan, endati, illadanta, kalishtalavanna, kartanana, stuti, sudramulaka, vage. How good?
Kartanakrupa, ina, tumbisalpatan.
How good we have done it?
Maru, yala, ches, ma, pani, me, mo.
A, karavan, avaretel, maadidin. It is because of our faith in God.
Endukantae, ma, viswasmu, devan, andundhi.
Yakandre, nama, nambike, devareli, the. In every situation, his grace is sufficient for us.
Pratiparisitla, kuda, aanakrupa, maaku, chalu, nu.
Pratiparisitla, athana, kripayu, namige, sakagittu. And God spoke to us from Daniel, chapter four, verse thirty five.
Daniel, gandam, nalgo, jayam, mupay, aydo, vachnumara, maru, devu, maata, maatlaned.
Davida, nalaku, motthaidramulaka, vage, devaramatigamata, idhru. He does things according to the good pleasure of his will in the midst of the inhabitants of this earth, and who can hold his hand and say, what do you have now?
Bhunivasula, andaru, aanadushikana, kinikagaru, aanaparaloka, sena, edalanu, bhunivasula, edalanu, tana, chittamu, chopuna, jerginchu, vadu, aanachayi, pattkuni, ne, veemi, chayichunnavani, aanu, to, chapputaku, yavadu, nu, samarthudu, kaadu.
Bhunivasigala, athan, drishtali, eenu, alla, dantidare, paraloka, sainidharu, le, bhuloka, dale, tana, ichan, saran, nadithanay, yaaru, athanakayen, indake, talalaru, neenu, eenu, maadutti, endu, yaaru, keredalaru. Some people pretend that they are turning the pages, but they are not looking.
Kothamandi, Bible, page, ilu, tipputunattu, noticeunar, gani, varu, akada, theatla, Bible.
Kelavu, satvayadana, tirisidaga, noticethaidanay. I know where the book of Daniel is.
Daniel, gandam, ekkada, na, ag, delso.
Daniel, gandam, na, e, na, gotto.
Genesis, chapter, sa, pram, sa, Bible, you see, ne, jipit, kavadi, kandu, tham. Adikandam, nirkamakandam, adu, vayip, tiputam, naru, ne, juseda, kala, jusunar.
Adikandam, emotion, kandam, tagadu, nan, nodu, vaga, adan, nodutaidan. Yantat chulakanakam manam abodikulamai potamani? Yantat chulakanakabodikulamaitunamani? Yes to sulubu agi naa sulugarakta.
Why you have to do that?
Nduke chale ala? Yaki arithel maduvekku?
Who can hold his hand and say what do you have now?
Aina chayipattukoni, nee vemi chaychunavani, aina yavadaadu, yavadaadu. Yavaru atana kayen indake tali, yenu yenu madutyendu kielayaru?
Having been spoken to us by that word, I and my children yielded to the will of God.
Ee vaakemu cheta marid evu martham artlananani chepi, marid momali memu, prabuki loperchukunam, loperdam. Ee vaakemu cheta devu matteegi matadidinamidagi, kartanina adhinaraju.
So we bless the Lord at all times.
Kabati meme yella pudi yavavani stutistam. Yadrindana naviyavagalu kartanani stutistave.
And secondly.
And renda, renda dika. Yedan daki.
Psalm sixty-two verse eight.
Yaabai rendavaa kietana envidachnum. Ayavat yarne kietana yarne achuna.
Trust the Lord at all times.
Yella pudu devu neendu namikeenchudi. Yavagalu kartanini nambe kaidri.
Trust the Lord at all times.
Yella pudu devu neendu namikeenchudi. Yavagalu kartanali nambe kaidri.
If you trust the Lord.
Neela lagu namikeenchite. Yavagani neenambe keditiro.
The next line says, you will pour out your soul before him.
Nee pranamu anaku kumaristavu. Neen?
Ah, sadhana, verse sadhana, sir. Sixty, sixty-two verse eight. Psalm sixty-two verse eight.
Aravai renda kietana envidachnumandi. Aravat eedu entu. Janara yella pudu ayan endu namikeenchudi, avra ayanasannidini, mee hru devamulu kumarinchudi.
Yeah.
Janare yavagalu atanani nambi, nimarudevun atanamunde vichiri.
If you trust him, you will pray to him.
Nee ayanu naminelette, nee ayanaku pradhara jastavu. Neen atanani nambirudadare, neen ataniga prarthne madhyaya.
Then how in faith we should increase more and more.
Atlu viswashamu nandu antakantaku abhirudipandali manam. Ee ritheli nambikeeli, echcha yavriti hundutena.
We should depend upon him more and more.
Manamu ayan endu nammikalu kuda, anaga aadharapadam kuda, antakantaku abhirudipandale. Atanali nau aadharapadu danna, echcha yavriti madukobe.
There are a lot of scripture illustrations before us.
Sabadi lekamalu aneka, amari dushantala manakorunai. Satyavedana aneka upmanakalakutanodutena.
When the disciples were caught up in a storm.
Marid shishulu tufanlo patabanna pru, chikunapru. Shisharu tupanali sikakonda ga.
They are rowing with a lot of difficulty.
Ento kastamutoa padavanu marid nitata unarval. Yes to kastadinda dooniana nadista edaro.
In Mark's Gospel six forty-eight, Lord sees that.
Mark's swarta aru nalapai envidalo, prabhu jushanadisham. Mark's swarta aru nalavat entrali, kartani vishaunno.
Then he come to them to rescue them.
Marid varini kapadaniki varidakostad prabhu. Kapadlikka orathreka kartanavartada.
How did he come?
Yala ochadu. Yavritel bandanu?
He came walking on the water.
A samudramidana naduchuchu ochadu. Atana samudramidana nadittabandanu.
And they said it is a spirit.
Marid emo marid dayemu du bhuta manar. Avre no bhuta bhuta antaida.
Lord said it is I.
Marid prabhanadu neene. Kartanaidu naane.
Ah, it is I.
Neene ochanu. Naane muda.
Then Peter said.
Apdannadu.
Peter said.
Abudpetranadu. Petranavagertane.
If it is you, I want to come to you.
Prabha, neevayte, neenu kudani yedakostanannadu. Kartane neenayagidre, naanupadani neenabalibartanu.
Then Lord said come.
Abudprabhanadu, sara ra, avakartanaidu, ba.
Then what did he do?
Omra apriyajeseado. Avak enmadu.
He did not put his hand and see whether the water has become solidified.
Neelu kadagatina yanjepi petru chaybetto, oxar chuddavani chaybetla. Neere nadu manjigatidya antele, petra kaitnodelila.
When Lord had come.
Prabhu ramman chepinapudu. Kartanu banthelidaga.
Peter, who denied him thrice, he stepped out of the boat and walked towards him.
Marid mooru saarli bongkina a petru, chandi ventane takshana me, a neelamile kalibetisnadu. Mooru saari alla gadantaa petrane, akoodale neerinamele kalitnu.
Peter getting out of the boat and putting his foot on the water is a token of faith.
A doonelo nundi tanakalunu, neetimida pettadamee, viswasaani ki suchana sanketam. A doonyo deeginda kalantagadu neerinamele idodu, nambikege suchane.
What a faith, what a faith by Peter had.
Petru ketchuani, yalan ti viswashavani? Notri petrani enta viswashavide?
And as Jesus walked on the water, Peter walked on the water.
Yesu nadustu vastunaga.
Yesu Kristu neelamida natchinado, adhi.
Yesu Kristu neelamida yala nadchunado, petru kuda neelamida alage nadchunadu. Yesu Swami yavritel neerinamele nadudanu, petru kuda zeritel nadudanu.
But he shifted his side from the Lord.
Aite tanad dhrustini, marid prabhu nundi koncha marchunadu. Adur tanad dhrustienna, kartaninda badalaisidu.
And saw his storm.
A tufanan jushunadu, a tufanan nodidu.
When he shifted his focus from the Lord, then he started thinking.
Eppudaita tanad dhrustini prabhu nundi pakagu vaidaligunchunadu, appude munakadam praramichunadu. Yavaga kartaninda tanad dhrustienna badalaisidu, mulugilikka aramavu.
Put me down, he said, Lord save me, then Lord rescues him.
Marid munigipomunde prabhanan rakshinchunade, vente prabhu rakshichunadu. Mulugitarave kadre, kartaneenanana kapadapandre kapadidu.
There is written, we have that account in Matthew's Gospel, chapter fourteen.
Mates swarta patnalakojjamula, dani bagam kudama karaabundhi. Matansuvartha adnalakne adyaydali amath barialpattidu.
It is written.
Ababundhi.
When they came into the boat, the storm was still.
Varu amari doonelo graagane, a tufanu agipoyini. Avaru. Prabha neevayte. Amuparindu mupaymudu, varu doone ekina pudu, gali anigenu. Aga dooneye no orin, hatva gaan gali.
Varu, varu doone ekina pudu.
Varu doone ekina pudu. Avaru dooneye no hatidu. Yedakamunde emainde. Ekakamunde emainde. Hatvokinta munchenaitu.
Munigu poosaga.
Nee petru neelu munigiposaginadu. Petranu neerinamele mulutaidu.
And Lord rescued him.
Prabhu tanana rakshinchunadu. Kartanatran rakshisidu.
Then what does it indicate?
Adi emjupisuni? Adi entorustaida?
They entered into the boat means what?
Varu doonelo ekina ekadam ante, ariinti?
They walked together on the water.
Ante varu neetimida kalisinadchunadu. Andavaru dooneye neerinamele seerinadudru.
Whatever is the distance, rendadugalo, mooradugalo, they walked together on the water and came into the boat.
Doone cheredaniki adi rendadugalo, mooradugalo, guraminto telidigani, varidhar kalisi a doonelo nikochunadu. A dooneye ni seerlikke yedu mooru parla, yes to godtila, adaruvu seeri nadudru.
Yes, Prabhu, and nadumil ettkoni bola.
Yes, Prabhu, marid petrani nadumil ettkoni bola. Yesu Swami, petranettkondogilila.
They both walked and entered into the boat.
Varidharu kalisi nadichid doone ekinaru. Oripuru seeri nadudu, dooney hatidu.
It is a small incident, but it is a very, very big situation.
Edi chala san, chinnasandarpamuka kanipichuchkani, chala goppa prabhavanni telepedigavundhi. Edi ondu chikka sandarbavagirbodu, adaruvu dotta prabhavanne beertaida.
You have definition of faith in Hebrews, chapter eleven.
Hebrews laku padakondojjamula, viswashamu korakana nirvachnum manakakundhi. Hebrews annandana adyaydali, nambike shivaadanta arthavana naanodutave.
Hebrews, chapter eleven, verse one.
Hebrews laku padakondojjam, madhachunadu. Hebrews eriga annandu vandu.
Now faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen, evidence of things not seen.
Viswashamunadi, nirikshimpa baduvaatiyoka, nijasorupamunu, adrushyamaynavi unnavanutako, rujuvanavani, rujuvayunavani. Nambike yo nau nirikshisugala shivaagi, baravasadindirvadu, kani kekana devagana, nijavanditilukoladu agide.
Evidence of things not seen.
Adrushyamaynavi unnavanadaniki rujuvayunavani. Kani kekana devagalu, ideemudagayudu deker, adu, nijavagide.
That is faith.
Adi viswasa. Adu nambike.
Things which are not tangible by the human way, by faith, they are tangible.
Anaga manava grahyani ki ardhamayekki kani vi, viswashamu dhara grainchabartai. Manavna graikige artha vaga lar danna, nambike mulukavagi gracebodu.
Hebrews eleven, chapter is a great subject on faith.
Viswashamunagurinchii, Hebrews laku prashpatika padakondojjam, goppa amshamgaundhi. Nambike vishiddali, Hebrews eriga prashpatika annandniyade, dotta vishivagide.
More from verses begin by faith, by faith, by faith.
Chala vachinali ajjamula viswashamu batti, viswashamu batti, viswashamu chethani madhavutani. Eli aneka vachinagalu, nambike mulukavagi, nambike mulukavagimudagaya aramavutavu.
They are all the heroes of faith.
Virandar guda viswashavirulu, yurallar kuda nambike veeraru.
They exercise faith and accomplish great things, mind-boggling things they accomplish.
Varu viswashamu nabyasinchutano batti, vari jyutavalo, yalan ti aaschere karal jasananta, adi mana uho ku, mana kalpanaku kuda, andani karal jasanarval. Avaru nambikeenana rudimadukoladu, mulukavagi, avaru jyitalistonda, adbu ta aaschere karagana madudanre, nama graikige miridanthagalu.
I want to tell you for the glory of God, we are not lesser than them.
Aite devu neemadumani chepenantente, mana varakante takku evagadu. Na devu neemega agi na nero denandre, na auriginta agi en kadime alla.
Without seeing, we also believed.
Choodakundane, manam kuda namutnam. Now noduve, now naminam. Now kuda nambideve.
Yeah, Philiph first Peter.
Madhupetru. Madhalepetra.
Chapter one, verse eight.
Madhacham, envidachnum.
First Peter, one eight.
Madhupetru, okati envidi. Madhupetra.
Who has not seen ye love, in whom though now you see him not yet believing, ye rejoice with joy, unspeakable and full of glory.
Telugala manakirmitamid kalasunam, mee rayananu choodakapoinanu, ayanu premanchuchunaru. Nee, ayanu kanulara choodakaya viswashinchuchu, mee viswashamunaku falamunu, anaga atma rakshananu ponduchu, chepo vaakemu mahimaikthamayana santoshamga, ayananichuchunaru. Neewatana kannaare nodalilavadu, atanenu priyatisutthiri, neewiga atanenu kanaadidu, atanali nambike ittu, ni ma nambike antepalavagirava, atma rakshinen ondavu ragi, edala shakkyavadanta, prabhavula santoshidinda, harshisutthiri.
Without seeing him, we loved him.
Manam ayanu choodakapoinanu premanchunam. Atanana noduvena priyatisidave.
Without seeing him, we believed on him.
Ayanu kanulara choodakunda unnanu viswashinchunam. Now noduveyatana nambikeedu.
Ephesians, chapter two, verse eight summarizes this.
Ephesians rendu envidini, edi eeklaptanga chettaundhi. Ephesians eedu entu, edana sankshiptavag.
By grace, he are saved through faith.
Viswashamu dhara krupachetamiru rakshimpavadinaru. Nambike muluka krupayindale rakshinavundidu ragidiri.
By faith, we are saved.
Viswashamu dhara rakshinabundnam. Nambikeenada rakshinavundidu.
By faith, we have the assurance of sin forgiven.
Viswashamu dharama, papaaluk shemimpavadinai, ananishtyata galugunam. Nambikeenada nama pappukaluk semisalpada.
By faith, we experience, by faith, we experience the presence of the Lord with us, always, underline, always.
Viswashamu dhara devu neesannidini gamaninchandi, yella pudu, yella pudu manamu anupavistuntam. Neenambike muluka devu resannidenna, gamanishre, yavagalu, yannadu nan, anupavistave.
I naato unnadu, and always I am conscious.
Aina naato unnadu, ani yella pudu dhairamutuntam. Atana notigidane, yavagalu namu dhairavagertave.
Whenever I entered the aircraft.
Meem, marid aircraft, airplane lo, vimana vela prasishapadu. Now, imanadali prayamaduvaaga.
They take me in the wheelchair.
Nanu wheelchairlo diskaltaru. Namana wheelchairlo karpadukar.
At the door of the aircraft.
A vimana veka talpudekara. Imanada bagalbalige.
I get up from the wheelchair.
Neen a wheelchair chilechi. A wheelchair.
As I tries to step into the aircraft.
A vimana vloki adukupeduthundaga. A imanadamele yajedvaaga.
Normally, an air hostess will come and catch my hand and take me inside the seat.
Maamulga akada panjeshaa, air hostess, marid chaybatkuri, nanu naa seatide garkinadupistate. A imanadali kelsamaduntaka, gagnaseki bonda, kaidudunana, naa seatmele kudustale.
And always, any air hostess, she would ask me one question.
Pratthi sariku da, pratthi air hostess guroka pressnadukutadu. Pratthi gagnaseki ondu pressnana, nan kiertale.
Uncle, your family alone, anybody with you?
Uncle, meeru, vantaraga prayanam yesunara, leta meetavu oru nuunara. Uncle, oru neemu obantigira gidra, atva ni motigyaradriidara?
I said, there is with me one person.
Neen antanu, naato unnaraka vekti. Anan edutane, nannotigobrida.
Which seat?
Yakadu kuchuntaranai, namaran seat edanaduktar. Avaru yelkudtaray, avaru yelidantke.
He said, my lord, I said.
Neen antanu, naa prabhu, naato untadu. Nanna kartanana notigirtane.
Then she would say, oh wow, she would say wow, very good.
Wow, very good, chala bachidatadi. Avaru yeltray, wow, bhalavalladu.
Once I was in Hebron.
Osari Hebron unnanu. Osari Hebron.
One brother knocked the door.
Okasawadu vechi talpudekantadu. Obasawadu.
I want to spend some time with you.
Ah, brother, meetokontasamangadupalankutunannadu. Sawadu, neemotigiran, samaykali.
Anybody with you?
Meetavu oru nuunara, anadigadu. Ni motigyaradriidu.
I said, somebody with me, but you can come in.
Ah, varu unnarandhi, kandmi raavachanannanu. Yavaro edare, nee varubodu.
Then he came inside.
Ainabul gochadu. Avaru varagadu bandru.
And he is looking for that someone.
Ah, yavaro, ayadu koruk edukutavu. Avaru yavaro antidinela, avaru goskarudutaida. Akada justavu. Akada akada justavu, yavaro, anneelini nodutaida.
What are you searching, I said?
Yevetukutunava, yaradigadu. Neen yenuudutaida.
There is someone with you.
Meetavu oru unnaragadu, annaragandhi. Ni motigyaradu antidinela.
Then I said, my lord is with me.
Ya, naa prabhu naato unnadu. Nandevu neetidane.
Then he said, adha, adha.
Adha. Anta anta telika. Anta anta telika.
Don't you believe?
Agurvagi. Anta nee namalava?
Think about it.
Alachinachin. Alachinamadri.
Hebrews, chapter thirteen, verse five.
Hebrews laku prashpatika padamodojjam.
Second portion of that verse.
Ah, vachnumla renda bagam.
For he has said, I will never leave you nor forsake you. Hebrews thirteen, verse five, last portion.
Chivari bagam, neenu yenadunu, edabayanu, ani ayaneye chepenukada.
Ayaneye chepenukada.
Aendigu, kaiduvidila, endigutoreidila, devurthaane hedidane.
Kaiduvidila. He will never leave you nor forsake you.
Nee chayenadu, viduvidu, edabaidu. Atana endiguk kaiduvidila, endigutoreidila.
Who said that?
Yavaranarantai mat. Yar edidrimat.
For he has said.
Ayaneye chepenu. Atane hedidane.
There is a lot of emphasis in that, ayaneye chepenu.
Ayaneye chepenu, anamatlo, manu nokkichudala manavakada. Nowthaane hedidane, no mat.
He is the God of Abraham, God of Isaac, God of Jacob.
Aina Abraham devu, Isak devu, Akav devu. Atana Abraham, Isak, Akav devu.
He is the almighty God.
Aina sarvashitgal devu. Adaruvu sarvashitgal devu.
He is the possessor of heaven and earth.
Aina akasha mulu bhooma nirvachuvadu. Adaruvu akasha bhooma nirvachuvadu.
He is faithful one who gives promises and also fulfills them.
Va, vaadana michi, dani neravechutalo, namakamena vadu. Vaadana kuttu neravechudari, nambikesanu.
He said, I will never leave you nor forsake you.
Ayanannadu, nee chayenadu, viduvidu, edabayanu. Atana hedidandri, atanini kaiduvidila, toreidila anteli.
But on your part, you should have faith.
Marid neevaypu, neeku viswashamu undalikada? Neenakadage, nambikeeravekala?
Most of the time it is not.
Aite chala saarlu alagu ledu. Aneka saar yarithelila.
While writing to Timothy.
Paulu Timothy girastu. Paulu Timothy gubarita.
He said in first Timothy, chapter five, verse twelve.
Modeti Timothy, aydu panindalo, idanga rastanu. Madhale Timothy.
First Timothy, first Timothy, chapter five, verse twelve.
Modeti Timothy, ayadojjam, panandachnum.
First Timothy, chapter five, verse twelve.
Modeti Timothy, ayadojjam, panandachnum.
Don't pretend that you have, you know, turned the pages.
Miradu Bible.
Look into the word of God.
Bible listener, that is not in second, churandevu.
First Timothy, five, twelve.
Modeti Timothy, aydu panindu.
They have cast off their first faith.
Modeta, wismodeta, tamam modeti viswashamu nu, vadalu konirani. Antaru tau, modalu kotta baravasake tapidaremba.
There are many believers, they have cast off that first faith that they had.
Chala mandu viswashaluntaru, unnaru, varu tamam modeti viswashamu nu vadilibetnar. Maalajastu viswashikalidare, avaru modalene nambikeene bitbitidare.
Second Thessalonian.
Rendavatessalonikal.
Chapter three, verse two.
Madhodjam, rendachnum. Rendatessalonikal, mooru edu.
All have no faith.
And viswashamu andariki ledu. Nambikeyo ellrelili illa.
He is writing to Thessalonian believers.
Churandi, Thessalonikka viswashal rastunadu. Thessalonikka delirvanta, viswashikali maritadane.
Whose faith and life was tormented throughout Macedonia.
Macedonia antakuda, ee Teselokani kelo unnavi, varu viswashamu, varu irikshana, varu prayasamunchi, chubukuntanu, katalkatalaga. Macedonia delirvanta, avaru ellrukuda, Thessalonikka daru nambikee bagi matadukutadu.
All have no faith.
Aite ekantadu, viswashamu andariki ledantadu. Adaruvu yeltradu, Kristan nambikee yallarrelili illa.
In Revelation, chapter two, verse four.
Prakatana gandam rendu nalugalo. Prakatana.
They left their first love.
Varu tamuk, tamuk modatunina premanu, vidichbetnar. Avaru modalina priytiyena bitbitidare.
If you cast off faith, you will cast off love also.
Miru viswasaani vadilibedte, premanu kuda vadilibetnete. Neen nambikeene bitbitre, priytiyene bitbitage.
Then also you will lose those works as we find Revelation two, five.
Marid prakatana rendu aydulo, adekramulochusthe, miru mee modatukriyane kuda vidichbedestar. Yedu ayideline, naanoduvaaga, nee modalene kriyagalu kuda bitbitidiri.
Then you become to, back to square one.
Ante marala modatukochinandamata. Igumatte, modalene tagi bandide.
So may God speak to us.
Sabadi devu, mantamartlanu gakka. Devu thaanamatiyemaatadli.
Faith is very, very important.
Viswashamanadi chala chala pramukham.
The whole.
Nambikee boodu daga, avushada.
Christianity rests on faith.
Viswashamanta kuda churandi, kavalam viswashamide adharapantundhi. Nambikee boodu kavale viswashikali, nambikee mele aadharapattide.
No faith.
Viswashamulethe. Nambikee illa.
The entire Christian will fall.
Viswashamuleka bote, marikristamanta kinnabadputadi. Nambikee dandre, Christatvella, kalkadu, bidhokudre.
Second Peter.
Rendapetru.
Chapter five.
Ayadojjam.
Chapter one, chapter one, please.
Chamchamcham.
Second Peter, chapter one, five to nine verses. Brother will read, listen to it.
Madhupetru, rendava, rendava petru, madhacham, aydu nundi tomidachunadu. Chautunadu, that is governmentchandi. Rendapetru, madhacham, aydu nundi tomidavu. A hetu chethane, meemattukumiru, poorna jagaratagala varai, mee viswashamu nandu, sadgunamu nu, sadgunamu nandu, naanamu nu, naanamu nandu, aasha nigrahamu nu, aasha nigrahamu nandu, sahanamu nu, sahanamu nandu, bhaktini, bhakti nandu, sawadara premanu, sawadara premanu, dayanu, amarchkunadi. Edi meeku kaligi vistarinchnedala, avi mana prabhanay, Yesu Kristu nu guchina, anupavak, gnana visyamulo, mimunu somarlane nu, nishpalane nu, kaakunda chenu. Edi yavani ki leka pono, vaadu tanapoorva papamalaku, shuddi kaligina sangati, marichpoyi, gruddi varadu nu, duradhrusti leni varadu nagunu. Ee karanindale, nee poorna sakthi olavu ragi, ni magirva nambikege sadgunavannu, sadgunake gnana vannu, gnana ke damenu, damenge taalmenu, taalmenge bhakti vannu, bhakti ke sawadrasnevannu, sawadrasneke priytiyena kudisre, yuvu ni ma leade echutapandare, namma kartanade, Yesu Kristana sambandavada, pariknana vannu, undu vishiddali, ni ma naalasi gararu, nishpalaru, agadantemadutave.
Enga parken, pa.
Enga parken.
Where are you looking?
Yedl nodutaida. Akada akada jusunadu.
Somebody wants you there or what?
Akada.
Pay attention.
Itu jut.
Such things disturb us.
Sabadi Atlantica lekandshi disturbaputai. Ee rithi namana, manasandrak.
There we have the importance of faith.
Ikada viswashamgurichna pramukhitavundhi. Eli nambikee ge pramukhitide.
To faith add virtue.
Viswasaani ki sadgunamu jatchyabatta. Nambikee ge sadgunavana serisbekantae.
To virtue knowledge.
Marid sadgunanake gnana manta. Sadgunanake gnana.
So for all those Christian virtues, the basis, the foundation is faith.
Kabati gunavulannitiki, ee lakshana lannitiki kuda, mulamu, neda aadharamu, viswashamu. Ee yalla gunagalega aadharu, nambike.
It is faith on which every other Christian trait is built up.
Kabati viswashamu midane, migita gunavulu, migita lakshamalani katta bartai. Nambikee mele, mikka gunagalu yalla kattalpattavu.
There is no faith, there can't be any Christian traits.
Adalvista, viswashamuleka bote, igam migita Christa sadgunalane le. aavu vista viswasa me lekabotha ikam migita christa sadgunalanu le nambe ke illa andre mikka christia gunagalella
that is where we want to drive home one point very important point without faith there is nothing in christian life
andike voka visya nee suutiga neruga me grange chalana visyamantante viswasa mu lekabotha anta shuneeme nee nondu nerava ghi sachva gamanishbekadandre nambe keelandre christia jeetanilla
there was a teacher
voka teacher unedi voka teacher idro
who was teaching elementary school tens hundreds thousands ten thousand one lakh like that
maari elementary school lo padulu vandalu velu lakshalu padi lakshalu ila uncle neerupistavandi irithi elementary school le hatu nooru savira laksha hatu laksha kalistaidro
ah one one zero one two zeros like that
vokati tani pakrasunna ma rendu sunnalu mursunalu ala neerupistana irithi one do one do sonne yadu sonne moru sonne kalistaidro
and she said one and five zeros is one lakh
ah maari amanindi vokati pakka naa idu sunnalu veta laksha vandaramundey idu sonne itre vandu laksha
he wrote it on the blackboard
ala nalla boardu veda vachakaga rasindi irithi le karibod mele baridro
in the meanwhile Kevin called her that headmaster is calling
maari ee loga headmaster gar pelustanarani malani punu chijaped irithi agi punu bandru astrolagi headmaster karitadarantid
then teacher left the class
ikka teacher ru class ulpetvelasochin teacher ru class
there was a naughty boy in this class
ah maari class lo ka allar piladunad class leyoba udal udugedda
he took the duster and wiped out one before one lakh
ah ibu duster diskoni ah idu sunnalu vandu vokati nitrupeisakaditla ikka duster tagundo idu sonne vandu 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 varspit
then teacher comes
ibu teacher ochin
regime for regime for class
ah tana chepe amsham konasagistavandi hilalara hilalara makale
one and five zeros
ah vokati idu sunnalu vandu idu sonne
and everybody one leedakna
ah araita pridakakka one leedu vokati leedu ikka ali one deilla
one is not there
ali vokati kanapattanle leedu ali one deilla kantaila
you know one
ah maari vokati lekabotha one deilla andre
those sunnalu have no value
sunnalu kuvilva leedu sonnegalega beraila
you put any number of zeros
enni sunnalu vetchina yes to sonnegale true
one controlled that
vokati ani ankane ee sunnalu annitini
one controls everything
vandu vandu sonnegale neen tristade avad vokati neen tristuni annitini vandu neen tristade ellavanna
and that one is faith
ah vokate viswasmu ah vanden nambe ke
that one is faith
ah vokate viswasmandi ah vanden nambe ke
I was telling an young man
ok evanasunay chepenu vandu evanasik eddide
what is faith
viswasmantendu chepen nambe keendre
F A I T H
F A I T H in English
F A I T H F A I T H
F A I T H
F A I T H forsaking all I trust him
annitini vidichpeti aynene nambe keenchudunu yellavanna bitbitu atna le nambe keedutene
yellavanna bitbitu karikucho I leaving everything else
annitini vidichpeti yellavittu
I will trust him
ayanene namukuntan atna nambutene
have you ever done it
yebradana jesa vapa ne yavaguna dharmaadiya
I have done it
I have neen jesa naan maadi
I am telling you for the glory of god
devu mahimata vajuptanadu devu mahimaga geltad
innumerable occasions
anekasankyaakamayna sandarbal anekasankya kada sandarabadali
I abandoned myself into the everlasting arms of the lord
nannu neenu ah devu nekka nitya bahu lo padeskunan nannanu naanu kartana bahugalebi
lord I am hands up
o prabha chedetestanani naanu kayetidadhar
I am yielding
nannu neenu nee global nananu neen
I have no plans and schemes
inga yalanti scheme lu planlu neen eskotla inni yav scheme plani naan akkodil
then lord will take over the situation
chudan apude akkada devu paristitrin tanachetla bedkutad aakle devu tanna namma paristina tanakailad
when you come to the end of yourself
ante neenu neenu inkantamukachikavala neenu neenu antake tandkolbe
when you come to the end of yourself it is from that point lord will take over and give you a tray
kabati nee neenu antakachikani dikku leedu anna dekkarunshi akkandu devu nekujamistad neenu neenu antake tandu inni yavadikilanda galindade
that is what is very very clear in that episode of Jhaushapat
Jhaushapat yokka vritthantamalo ah visyame chala suspashtangavadandhi Jhaushapat naa vritthantadel adu eddu kantaidhe
read at home the entire chapter of second chronicle chapter twenty you will understand
renda vathinavatantamalu hiroyajam maari daichis me rentikelli vattam adhamantachadavandi me kattamavati yedne porakal vritthantai patneya dhayavana news firstva godrima artathade
total dependence upon the lord
devu me de samppurnamuga aadharpadta devu mele vataagi aadharpad
all the believers of the lord
renda gada devu nandu viswasmunchu varandaru devu lele nambe ke
in bears wine from elsewhere whoever have come take a decision lord I trust you I trust you I have faith on you
bearsva viswasil gavachu leda ittra sangalunju vichasal gavachu deva o prabha kavalamu neemidane neemida matramenee nee samppurnamuga viswasmuchitranee othirmanam tiskondi bearsva viswasi galagirvadu atva varigindabandavaga guradu devre naan neen mele nambe keedtad
when the lord will come again
apudu prabhu trikochinapudu kavakartan tri bandaga
what he would say
ayanu ennjustarandhi atna ennodtane
not how effectively you are preaching
nu yantaprabhaavu antanga bodhichanani gadu neen yavaprabhaavinda bodhichidandala
how effectively you are recording
yantachakaga nu rekard jastanani gadu yantak chat neetai rekard
how effectively you are singing
nu yantamaduranga ekka patla battranani gadu neen estu madhavaga haraart
how skillfully you are playing instruments
yantanaipunnetu nu vaidal vaistrani gadu yes to naipunnetinda vaatigalana
god wants to see whether you are in faith
nu viswasa manandu unnava leda annadi prabhu chudakal nee nambegastanagidi chustadu
that is what he expects from you
kabati nee nundiyana korthundu kudada neeninda korthuladu atna de
Luke's Gospel
Lucas Swarta Lucas Swarte
Luke's Gospel
Lucas Swarta
chapter eighteen verse eight second portion
enmeda chsnam enti maalaki jeptranti enmeda padjamdo Lucas Swarta Lucas Swarta padjamdo jam enmeda chsnam Lucas Swarta adan ente ente
second portion says
chivari bagamantandi
nevertheless when the son of man cometh shall he find faith on the earth
ayanu manushukumaru vachinapudu ayanu bhooma me de viswasa mu kanugununa ikke theru manushukumaru vandaga bhooma mele nambe keen kaanuvanu
will he find faith on the earth when he would come again
ayanu marila trikochinapudu bhooma me de viswasa mu kanuguntada atna trikibandaga bhooma mele nambe keen kaanuvanu bhooma mele anta nela mele na bhooma mele anta nela mele na bhooma mele nela mele na nela mele unnan nee nela mele unnan nee andu nela mele vanta neen mele
in you you want to see faith
maari neelo nee andu ayanu viswasa mu chudakorthunad neenali nambe keen naa noduvaicidana atnu
that is why Paul write to Corinthians believers
andike paula corintilo viswasil graastu
second Corinthians
renda corintilo
chapter thirteen
padamudacham
verse five
aidhochnum yedne corinta
second Corinthians thirteen five
renda corintilo ku padamudacham aidhochnum
examine yourself whether he be in faith
renda corinti padamudu idlo yedne corinta admoraidu me ru viswasa mudvara vara unnarola edo mimunu me re shodinchukoni chuchkunadi kristanambe keelidiro illavo yendu ni ma ni me perakshiscoliri
are you living by faith or by sight
maari me ru velichuputho untnarala viswasa mu to jivistunara nodde rindanamptadharatva nambe keen da jistaidhara
lot went by sight
lotu velichupunbatti velipanad lotu no nodde ramulaka
he was totally destroyed
samppurnaga nationalipanad samppurnaga naschavad
we ought to live by faith walk by faith
manam viswasa mudvara naravalisinavaramu mana viswasa mudvara jivinchavalsinavaram now nambe ke mulaka vage nadalu jivisvantara
so let us cry unto the lord
kabati rendi devu nekumarbetukunam maanirik devu nekumar
as disciples prayed unto him
shishlu yala gayta anu prathanjasero shishera yavritilatanga prathnamaduro
Luke's Gospel
Lucas Swarta
chapter seventeen
padhiodjam
verse five
aidhochnum
Luke's Gospel seventeen verse five
Lucas Swarte adan adnalu aidu
they said increase our faith
abasul ma viswasa mu vritthipandinchu mani prabhu to chapaga abasul sami namanambe ke nee chiswendhal ma viswasa mu vritthipandinchu mani prabhu to chapaga